Join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for another day. Thank you for the freedom that we all get to enjoy in this country. Thank you for those who work for Bourbon County and honor the scriptures for maintaining order, promoting justice, and creating an environment that promotes the common good of our community. Please bless our leaders tonight as they are faced with important decisions. Give them wisdom, courage, and guidance to make decisions that promote a sound foundation for the Bourbon County today and in the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, it's your time to shine, Damon. Approval of the agenda?
I move to make an amendment to the agenda. Another executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4 to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships.
What part of the agenda do you want to add?
What do you want to add? Down on the bottom with the other executive sessions.
Okay, so we'll make it...
Probably between G and H.
Okay, so we'll just shift.
I'd like to add something as well. It would just be a motion to add the executive session, KSA 75-4319B1, to discuss personal matters. And this is only if in the job description discussion it moves to that and people feel more comfortable, because I don't know exactly if it would be inappropriate. In addition to that, I'd like to move item 8F, the policies and procedures, to the top of 8 Old Business.
So, F, policies and procedures, you want it moved there?
Yes, ma'am. Just to the top of Old Business.
To the top, okay.
Right above A.
Okay. Perfect.
So you want F moved to the top?
Yes.
And then you want A, so...
And do you, you said an additional...
Executive session.
Executive session with the job descriptions?
Yes, only if it moves to that. So you could strike that if nobody feels uncomfortable talking about it.
Oh, off the policy and procedures.
Yes, yeah. It would just be in addition to that if you needed to move in there, since some jobs only have one employee.
So, I will make a motion that we add an executive session, KSA 75-4319B4, to discuss personal matters of individual... Oh, no, B4, sorry. Wrong page. B4, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. Towards the bottom of the agenda, and in that motion, I'll also make a motion that we move Old Business, item F, to the top of Old Business with a possible executive session if need be at that time. There's your full motion.
I second.
Beer bearer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Approval of minutes from 4/21/25 and 4/22/25?
I move we approve the minutes. From 4... I have old agendas, I have the wrong dates.
4/21...
4/21/25 and 4/22/25.
4/21/25 and 4/22/25.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer bearer?
Yes.
Who seconded? Beer bearer?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda, approval of the 4/25/25 accounts payable totaling $52,567.96. Approval of 4/1/25 account payable totaling $5,237.21. We could also approve the tax roll corrections. Have you had time to look at the March financials?
No.
So we'll do items A through C.
Okay.
Table D.
So it would be very hard for you to table D or E, because you have quarterly reports that are required to be filed in the newspaper, published in the newspaper.
We can just look through them real quick.
And I would be more than happy to walk through them with you if you'd like. The bank reconciliation, which is this first page, you want to always make sure that this number ties out to our cash report, which is called the fund status report. Micah, you weren't here during, when we really talked through this, but we have, we have to make sure that we don't have any accounts in the negative. And so in this right far right column, none of these can be in the negative except for insufficient funds checks, because basically it's part of the general fund. We just pull it out in its separate fund. So total down here is not in the negative, so we're in good shape.
So insufficient funds, that, is that just an account, just to cover other accounts?
It's no bad checks written to the county. And think about it, it's tax dollars, so some of those could be pretty big checks. I don't know how many's in that fund. I'd have to ask the treasurer at this point, but that's what that is. And so then we make sure that there are no negative. That is what your, your cash basis law says, is that you cannot spend, overspend a fund more than what the cash is available.
Okay.
We're close, we're beginning enough in the year that we're not having to worry about budget violations yet. We start worrying about those about your third quarter, and you start doing projections out and making sure we don't have any budget violations. And so if you go to page 7 of that document, in the ending cash column, that number should match the bank reconciliation. And so your bank reconciliation is made of your treasurer's accounts, your clerk's accounts, and any CDs that you have.
And only the treasurer and the clerk have accounts?
That are part of this.
Okay.
Yes, so all money flows through here. There's only, there's only a few accounts, and Patty and Jennifer will be in charge of doing securities pledged. That's a report that I can kind of talk through with you also. On that report, you'll also have a UMV account, that is the county attorney's, and you'll have a city-state account, that is the inmate account. And so it's important to have that information so that we can make sure we have enough securities pledged by the bank.
And so, but you don't have those two accounts to reconcile?
Not in here, no. Those are reconciled by the county attorney, as well as the sheriff's office.
Okay.
So, and those are required to be sent to the treasurer so that she can validate it.
But she don't give them to us?
No. Unless you would like that.
Okay.
So you can ask for that. The next page is your state payments. We kind of went over this as well before, but I'd like to get her brought up to speed on this. This shows all of your payments coming from the state, so your sales tax, we get an excise tax, highway equalization tax, highway tax, and sometimes an alcohol tax.
How far behind are they? They send them every, or they hold it a month, or I mean?
So your sales tax is about two months behind. So like what we receive in March is actually January. So, and this report's important, because if you, it helps you to kind of look back over the previous years and see where we're coming in at compared to previous years. And I have over here in prior year comparison, over/under. It shows you that our sales tax is up over what was the previous year, but that is because we have an additional sales tax for the hospital.
Oh, I see.
So that's deceiving. So if you turn to the next page...
So if you take off the percent of sales tax from the hospital, are we still up?
Let's go to that and look. So that next page is, it breaks it down by, this is Public Works at the top, where it says hard surface roads. And so we're averaging about $128,000 each month. And if you look at previous months for, you can kind of see each previous year.
Do they share their money? If they got, if they make more money on their percent of sales tax, can they share it with other entities in the county if they need it?
They cannot, they cannot, because the law has written that it's for hard surface roads only.
Oh.
It can only be used for that, it's a dedicated tax.
So he can't even share it with the rest of his department?
No.
It just, that.
Hard surface roads.
So he needs to find a hard surface road to fix?
Yes. And the, yeah. The problem that we've seen, last year we saw a major dip in sales tax. So it went from 1.6 million to 1.2 million. And so that really hurt us being able to do some roads last year. We're tracking a little bit better this year, so we'll just keep watching it. But that's the number you really want to look at, is that monthly average?
We don't know what caused the dip in sales tax, just less people buying or shopping?
Yeah, that's what I think. I can't tell you for sure. It could be that some, could be that some businesses are delinquent in paying their sales tax, too.
Okay.
There could be a variety of things that go into that. The next grouping is the point for sales tax, that is for the, to pay off the bonds at the jail, as well as for some leases that we have. And so you can see that it's up, and it was down a little bit last, last year for the average, but it's, it's maintained pretty much where it should be.
And it can only go towards paying that off?
Yeah, it can go towards paying jail debt, it can go for paying operations of the jail, and it can go for buildings.
Is operations, is it, are, are employees considered part of operations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and it can go...
So you can remove it to payroll if you need it to?
If you need to, and I'll talk about that later on tonight. We've got some other subjects we're going to talk on, and so I'll explain that a little bit more in detail. But it can only, it can, it can do repairs to this building. And so some of the repairs that we're want, we're needing to do on the outside is going to come out of this, this funding. And then your next grouping is your emergency sales tax, how much we've collected so far.
Back to this one, if the bond's not paid off, wouldn't you just want to pay off the bond early?
You could, you could pay off the bond.
And then not be paying interest anymore?
That's possible. Now, it's an increasing bond expense, so your, your debt service is an increasing debt service. It's not, not the same each year. And so, and I'll show you that also where your projections are looking. I do think that there's some other plans that may be discussed later on tonight, that we can go in further detail about that, and we can refer back to this if we need to. For the countywide sales tax for emergency services, we have distributed everything through February to them, to Freeman Hospital, and later on, I'll talk about that as well, about some requests that they have. But basically, once we get it per our agreement, we're to release it back to them. If you go to the next page, it's called, it's titled major sources of revenue. I think it's important that these areas are always looked at, because a few years ago, we got into a lot of trouble where there was not covert money coming in, landfill receipts were not being deposited. So this keeps everybody on their toes, and if you see a dip in one of these numbers, you probably ought to be asking questions. This is a super important report. So at the bottom right, where the yellow is, covert sales, and you can kind of see covert sales start coming in around June in most years, some years earlier. But we've only had one payment of covert sales this year. So, you know, you might ask questions, and that person would be Eric.
So who?
To the public. So if it's a replacement covert, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a replacement covert, it's, does not cost anything. If it's a new covert, it does cost the person.
Well, could they be buying them from somebody else?
No. They have to be purchased, I think they have to be purchased by us, Eric?
So we buy, we buy our culverts and bought, different sizes?
Right. Culverts, they have to be installed by us and purchased from us?
Uh, no. They have to be our culverts, which we went to plastic. We sell them to them at our price, but they can either install it, or we can install it.
So that could be a reason sales are down, too, then? If they're, if you're not paying them to install them?
There's no new ones. Not having very many new ones, are we?
Just not having very many new ones?
We just haven't had any, she said covert sales were down so far this year, so that's just because nobody's been buying them, right?
Right, we haven't put that many new ones in. I know we have some new ones coming up, I think there's maybe two, three new ones to be installed, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Landfill receipts. Usually the income coming in is offset by expenses going out over to Allen County, so you always want to keep a pretty good eye on that and your cash balances in the landfill. Chemical cells, of course, that's when we have...
Should pick up here.
Yeah, weeds that we have to, yeah, so this, this will start going up.
So this side item should be matching these line, this line item?
Should be very similar. There shouldn't be a whole lot of difference.
Not the total at the end?
Yeah.
Because that's all the months, I'm supposed to...
Yeah. Sewer district, this is one that, this is the Lake Sewer District, and the city of Fort Scott is supposed to send over to us monthly checks to cover that, because they are the utility that collects those dollars and then gives it to us, and then we pay the debt service. There will be about halfway through the year where we don't have enough money to cover that, but by the end of the year, we do have enough money to cover the debt service, so you may see that fund in the negative. That's okay, because the, there's a utility there to pay off the, the debt service. So I, we, if I see a couple of months that's get skipped here, then I'll reach out to Patty and say, hey, we need to reach out to the city of Fort Scott and be sure that they're paying us timely. EMS, we would like to see this number up higher than what it has been. This could be due to a lot of different things. It could be people not paying their bills, our receivables could be up. We are trying to be a little bit more aggressive in collections, and Terry's been sending out letters in addition to what we're already doing.
Is it only about $1,000 different than last year, though?
Yeah, it is. But we usually see...
But you'd like it more?
Yeah.
You'd like more?
Seventy, seventy to eighty is a good breaking point, so you're not having to fund it with property tax. We want this to fund itself as much as possible. Jail, you...
Oh, that's a lot better than last year.
Yeah. We are, I think Luke's been doing a really good job of billing tim, more timely, and so we're receiving more funding. If you can see, previous years, maybe didn't have as many inmates there, or we weren't billing timely. I, I don't know the situation, so I, I can't speak to that.
I think we're on the rebound from COVID, so...
Yeah, yeah, so I think we're doing a lot better. But, you know, that's additional income that wasn't budgeted for, so. And then the sheriff, that one just kind of fluctuates.
Did that one pay for his car?
Sure.
He can or no?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Technically, the sheriff and corrections is part of the general fund. We do, we do split it out, but by law, the income is a general fund income that, as a commission, you guys can determine how those funds are spent.
Okay.
If you go to the next page, these are your bank CD and interest accounts. This kind of shows you, I do have some concerns, interest is down, which I think we're seeing that across, you know? So this is one I want to really pay attention to, because if it dips, then we need to take that into consideration as we're looking at budgets, because we may have projected at a little bit higher rate, and if we don't bring that in, then we have less money to fulfill the budget requests. So something we need to pay attention to.
What, what rate did you project it at?
$400,000 was what we put in the budget that we would come in at, and so...
What percentage would that have been?
Of the income?
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can, we can dig into that during a budget session.
Sorry, slowing down and already slow meeting.
That's okay, that's okay. The next one is the first three months cash report. So it's basically this exact same report right here, but for three months. So it shows your beginning balance, your receipts, your disbursements, ending cash, any encumbrances that we have, and what our unencumbered cash balance is. And encumbrances are expenses from the prior year that we have put in this column that we know are out there, hanging out there, that we're going to have to pay.
Projected bills.
Yeah, we're not to pay. And so the clerk, the treasurer, and usually the chairman sign off on this, and we publish it in the paper. And that has to be done, it's supposed to be done by the end of the month, so we're pushing it by...
Two days.
Yeah.
Two days.
Yeah.
Let's see.
You guys pass it, I sign it.
And I'm more than, I'm more than happy to...
I didn't see anything that stuck out there that...
Yeah.
No, I think, I think we're doing okay so far.
And we can get more in detail on budget reports, maybe, you know, every few months we sit down and we look at them, and I say, okay, we're projecting out that this might be light, we might...
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be bad deals to go over it every quarter.
Okay, I can do more detail on that.
All right, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through, are we?
E, yeah, quarterly financial report.
Yeah, E, yeah.
A second. Milburn?
Uh, yes.
Beer bearer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
We'll pass time, but I need to do bids.
Pest control bid open.
I'll let you, okay, thank you. These are already...
These are just my paperwork, yep.
Okay. We have a bid from Quality Pest Control Incorporated, Professional Termites and Pest Control, Gary McCable. Initial service charge, $375, monthly charge, $375, so it looks like you get a, maybe, are you putting down a deposit, and then $375 after that? I don't know.
And it's for all locations? EMS, Public Works, Annex, and Courthouse?
Yes, let me read this. Monthly treatments, Bourbon County Courthouse, and Bourbon County Annex, EMS, and Public Works, beetles, German roaches, crickets, ants, and rodents. Let me look that one. Okay, we have Ashcraft Pest Control, 1216 South Main, Terry Pruitt, bid for pest control services for Bourbon County. Includes monthly pest control service, bait stations as needed, and outside perimeter at least twice annually. Three-year contract, starting April 30, 2025, to April 30, 2028, but does not include bedbugs or termite. This includes pest control services to all floors of the courthouse and the modular on the property. I think they're separate, okay. So 250 for that, and then Bourbon County Annex gets 50, EMS, Woodland Hills gets 50, and Public Works is 150, so it's a $500 total on that one. Then we have Pest X Solutions, out of Missouri. Don't know who that is. The following locations listed at Fort Scott Housing Authority will receive service, Housing Authority, Bourbon County Courthouse, Bourbon County Annex, EMS, Public Works, and Bourbon County Landfill. Rats, mice, roaches, Pest X Solutions inspects and applies pest management materials as necessary in the above listed locations to provide control of the following pests, the rats, mice, and roaches. The pest will remove, the pest removal process will be conducted in accordance with the local and national pesticide laws and regulations. According to the EPA, pest removal will utilize all available methods, pest control using the safest options first. These include structural maintenance, sanitation, pest monitoring, mechanical, biological control, and the careful use of pesticides with controlled environmental, environment. Pesticides used are approved by a designated facility represented, representative before application. Service specifications, following the establishment of a preventative level of control, all locations will receive a monthly pest control service that will cover the control of all covered pests. Calls for additional service in the event of additional services are necessary between our regularly scheduled visits, such services will be rendered promptly without additional charge. It's our procedure to call clients requesting additional service within four hours of the additional service request. Documentation and communication. A pest management program manual will be furnished and maintained by Pest X Solutions. The program manual will consist of the following information, Pest X Solutions contract information, certificate of insurance, licenses and certifications, descriptions of the service program, liabilities, safety data sheets, pest sighting reports, detailed service reports. Pest X Solutions places a strong emphasis on maintaining communication with designation, designated personnel to assure proper implementation and success of the pest management program. Pest X Solutions will provide onsite training with each service, effective communicating structural and sanitation concerns related to maintaining an effective pest management program at your facility. So pricing, the rate for service in all locations will be set as followed, Bourbon County Courthouse, $100, Bourbon County Annex, 50, EMS, 60, Public Works, 100, and Bourbon County Landfill, zero? So, 310, is that right? Three, one, two, 310. Okay. I don't know. None of them have any names on them. That one, that one is like... Okay, this one I don't have a name, just the name of their company, so. There you go. Discussion?
I want to look at that other one, too.
Thank you.
There you go.
What was that?
Go ahead.
Well, um... May I, may I see this?
Yeah.
So, um, yep. Pittsburgh, Kansas, Terry's local, he's in Fort Scott, Quality Pest Control with Gary McCable is in Pittsburgh, and I don't, I don't know where that ones are from. Does that one have a name on it?
Does it say how long they, this last one, how long they...
I think they're currently our vendor.
They are currently our vendor? Is it a yearly? Okay.
Yeah, EMS has, who do you have?
Yeah, Ashcraft.
Yeah, Ashcraft, yeah.
So how would that work if you took one that, that included EMS? And they already have a contract with Ashcraft?
I don't know. I think it's a month to month. I don't know. Terry, do you have a... And, and one commission can't bind another commission, so you guys can go out to bid anything you want to.
Okay. Yearly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we can't counter.
On the barter?
Checking.
With that $375 upfront, Quality Pest Control would be $406.25 per month. And then Ashcraft, 500, and Pest X, 310.
So they charge that initial service every month?
I think it's a one-time for the year.
One-time, but you add it over the 12 months. That's technically what it's gonna be, is $406.25.
I have total of, for, cause it said for a year, yearly contract. I had $4,875.
Yeah, but then add on the...
No, I added, I timed the monthly rate and then added the $375 at the end for the initial rate, yeah.
Let me look. Then, then did you divide it by 12 to see what your...
No.
Yeah, so it's at $406.25.
Looking at the total.
Yeah.
Did one of them not include EMS?
No, they all did.
No, one of them didn't include the landfill, I think.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't include it on our bid.
Okay. Two of them wanted it included.
My bid for Ashcraft Pest Control includes the landfill as they needed. If they need it monthly, I will do that in prices.
Oh, okay.
I think Pest X has included, uh, the, uh, zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Pest X.
That is included in the public works.
Okay, so they're gonna do the landfill for $0.
And then Pest X is our current, uh, pest control person.
Okay.
Any problems?
No, we've always provided good service.
Do you have a buzz? No, different Missouri. They do provide a bit, so that's up to you guys.
Do you know what the Pest, Pest X bid was last year?
Uh, we didn't take, we haven't taken bids in years.
Okay.
This is the first time we've taken bids.
They've, they've been our service for years.
They've been our service for years?
And it was the one guy from Missouri?
Mm-hmm. You have one from Pittsburgh, one local, and one from Missouri.
What do you guys think?
And they also do the sheriff's department, too, because they have to be...
That's not included in this bid.
Right.
They didn't wanna participate, the sheriff didn't wanna participate in any of these bids.
Okay.
Okay. Do what?
Sorry if I asked for questions, but...
Yeah.
Sure.
This is the first time I've had a chance to bid on anything for the county in probably 25 years. I'm a lifelong breadwinner for the county. I've been in pest control this month, which is the start of my 44th year. It seems kind of lonely to me that I spent all my money here and paid my taxes here. Like I said, this is probably the first time in 25 years I've even got anything to bid on.
I hope we can change that and make it more transparent so that, so that everybody knows when bids are going out, so the local contractors can have a, you know, really good, um, and maybe watch it from the, the previous year, cause they're all public and kinda know what they're paying now and be able to be competitive. I hope that we can start doing that and putting things out to bid for, uh, so our local community, so our local guys got a chance.
Well, I can attest for Terry for EMS. We've never had a problem.
I've sprayed EMS for what, two years?
We've never had a problem.
When we put the, the bids out, was it for just one-year term or, um, cause I'm, I'm, like with Terry's, it's...
This is a three-year contract.
Three-year contract, yeah, okay.
That's what we put the bids out as, so that we could do it every three years.
Okay.
Now, you're more than welcome to change that to be annually.
No, I'm, I, I, it was the only one I saw that had put a three-year price.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody ever use Quality Pest Control? It's the first I've heard of them, so. Said Pest X is good. Nobody's got complaints about Ashcraft, so.
I don't wanna be, I mean, you, you put a, understand that you put a bid out for a certain date. It was published in the paper. I did not send them a letter, cause I wasn't aware. That, that's on me, so, um... But that one was late. It was brought in this evening, so.
Which one?
Uh, Pest X. It didn't meet the dub line, but we've taken other things in the past.
Yeah, actually, we just found out about today. So he came with correct witnesses.
You don't ask him, tell him by the end of business on Friday?
Yeah.
And he had lost his head, so he'll come Thursday, so...
Yeah, no, I think I heard.
Yeah.
So how you wanna do this?
I just have to disclose everything.
I'll write it on a piece of paper, hand it in.
Oh, you cannot do that. You cannot do that.
Well, I, I, I'll just start off then. I'll, I'll, I say my, my choice is, uh, Mr., or the Ashcraft Pest Control. And my reasoning is, is that, well, it was the first one I've seen that, that provided a three-year bid and also I hold a high stake in local, so. That's mine.
Well, I mean... I kind of agree with you, these local guy. I mean, the guys we're using now, um...
I think the all three companies, I mean, at least I know, uh, I know Ashcraft, cause I've dealt with them before, and I take Mr., uh, Dave's, Dave's, uh, opinion. So I think they all, but they both pride, provide service. I don't know about the other one, but, um, so it's not, I, I'm not questioning the service for me. It's just preference.
I prefer to give the local guys a chance myself, but I don't wanna set a precedence that no matter what you bid, if you live here, we're gonna pay you more.
Right. Well, the, uh...
Because it's not my money.
I understand that, too. But the only other two I did not see, I mean, I only seen the yearly, so I don't know if the, if the price goes up every year with them, cause they didn't do a three-year.
Right.
Where, where the one company, you know, is, is gonna be the same for the, for the three years.
Yeah, whether chemical goes up or not, we're just locked in. Is that, is that right, Terry? Whether chemical goes up or not? You're just, you're gonna give it at that price regardless?
And it's, a lot of counties use a lot of baiting systems.
Yeah.
I do baiting systems like for roaches and possibly sensitive areas, but as I said, I've been doing it for 44 years.
That's another read.
You cannot just use a baiting system and a monitoring system and get control, especially when you've got a big building like this and a public building like this. You've gotta do some spread.
You guys, make a motion. Somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Do a vote.
I'll move that we pick Ashcraft.
One second.
Pest Control.
Beer Bear?
Been moved and seconded.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Millburn?
Yes.
Just gonna pass that around if you guys are signing that. And then we'll do, the next will be trash bids.
I will get the David and we'll get something scheduled and get it.
No, was it just in here? No, okay.
Yeah. So you probably need to wait for the end of this bid.
Mm-hmm.
On this building, Dave said that, off of him and this building, he said that you would come in about seven in the morning, which I don't have a problem with, or there's not a lot of people that are using after this building, like on two different ways. Because I can't go through this whole building in an hour.
Got it.
I have to knock it out.
Okay.
Anytime anybody should have any problems, we have this holiday in the book.
Perfect.
Thank you. Trash service bid. Next one is maybe the one drive here, don't have any service.
Okay, you have Lynn's Sanitation, located in Fort Scott, Kansas, April 25, 2025. Uh, Bourbon County Trash Service Bid, $470 per month. No additional fees, no yearly increase. Lynn's Sanitation, thank you, B.A. Miller.
So for all locations?
Yeah, they weren't real specific.
470.
Just Bourbon County, so.
That was Lynn's Sanitation?
Yes.
Is this a three-year or one-year or?
It's a three-year.
We put it up three or four years ago.
WCA.
He's been sent some additional certificates of insurance and things. Um, this is WCA out of Missouri. Joplin, it looks like, um... Oh, that's written really little.
Need my reading glasses?
There you go. I'll just read this one. Um, Bourbon County is requesting bids for the purpose of trash service. Oh, this is...
Bid sheet, so do they have a number?
Oh, here we go. It's really little. They're all separate, it looks like. So, does that one have numbers on it?
It's, no.
It's got my location now.
The only thing it's got is between, between June 1st, 26, and May 31st, 27, the standard fees will not increase more than 7%.
Oh, so it's got a 7%.
Cap on it. And it says the same thing for 2027 and 2028.
Okay, so that first one's 150.
There's more than one fee.
Standard fees, standard rate.
That's weekly. For each place. So you're gonna do 116 times four? Oh, I'm sorry, here it says monthly. Okay, so 116, 53. 116, 53 for Elm Creek. The first one was for the courthouse, Bourbon County. 116 for Elm Creek. 103, 62 for EMS. And 103, 62 for Public Works.
Is that weekly or monthly?
It's, here it says charge type monthly.
Okay.
It just, over here it said every week, so it's just so little, I'm sorry.
What was the total monthly on all that?
I got 440, 30. But they have a 7% increase.
How much was the total?
440, 30.
440.
And they have a 7% increase.
With, with up to a 7% increase.
Mm-hmm.
It will not go over. Was that each year, the 7%?
Yeah, it says, so if you read this page here, customer-specific terms, where we're supposed to sign it, I guess.
So in the first year, you would get up to the...
So, June 1 of 26 to May 31st, 27, they will not increase, they will not increase more than 7%.
So...
And then the following June, through May, it could go up to another 7%.
That was only them two.
And that one was all inclusive, right? It didn't, it wasn't real specific on the...
It wasn't specific, yeah.
Yeah.
May I say?
Yeah.
I'm actually representing Lynn's Sanitation. Uh, when I called Friday, there's really no clear, like, the answer I got was that, like, what is the service? Because courthouse is actually service three companies. And at our price, we're not, we actually service three of them. The courthouse, the county barn, the public works, and Elm Creek. And we don't service EMS right now, but I couldn't even get the answer of like, how often they're serviced. But we were gonna continue with like, we've been servicing it regularly.
Do you currently have the service?
Yeah. The three of the buildings.
How often do you guys get service now and who does it?
I do.
Yeah, EMS.
Once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah, I'd say we were gonna honor the three times a week at the courthouse. Once a week at the county public works. The Elm Creek is a little different, which we, you know, it's just, there's, it's seasonal.
Right.
During, you know, that would be once a week. And then the other off-season would be every other week.
So...
Then the EMS would be once a week.
And that's in that, in that price that you just, okay.
All inclusive, no rates or...
Let me see the first one.
Three-year contract.
Lynn's?
So...
There's that one.
But it said there was raises.
And there's that.
No, that one does. Lynn's, yeah, Lynn's Sanitation says right here.
Oh, okay.
Four Saturday months, no fees, no yearly increase for the three-year contract.
Okay, okay.
Right, the three years?
Yeah, it would be three years.
So he's talking about this Lynn's Sanitation, rather than...
Yeah, he's Lynn's, yeah. So, um...
That's like when the bid went out, there was no, it don't say like how often it's serviced.
Yeah, it didn't. You're right.
I mean, we're gonna honor that, how often it's serviced.
Well, any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, I'm making a motion with her on Lynn's Sanitation.
I'll second.
Uh, Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Millburn?
Yes.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next order of business. Executive Session Non-Elected Personnel, sunny 5-4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. And Susan, you asked for this, so who needs to be in there?
Um, the three commissioners and myself.
Okay. It'll be the... It'll be the three commissioners and the clerk.
I think we need twenty minutes.
You want twenty minutes? So we will be back at...
And it is for job performance.
Okay, for job performance. We will be back at six forty.
I'll second.
Millburn?
Yes.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Who's got the timer?
Me. Six twenty.
I'm having a time. That was kind of a big deal. You know, bed bugs in, in Germany, it's by section two. About three or four sold, shat down with crabs. And so what happened is they quarantined them for months. They gave them some wind, they had to go through the permit.
How you doing?
Yeah, creative. Might be a long one tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Depends on how...
How fascinating, those two things. Continue like they're doing, it's a really long one. Yeah, but this is great.
These are must big houses. That was honestly a good organization. We gave that to you, that's going to come in. Sell us some fire. It didn't... If they had, if they had just been dead, then we would have been fed, but... No, for the... However, it's so much harder than that. Somebody has a quarantine move, take it out, they ain't living there, you know, so...
And when you talk about that, all kinds of them, it's a lot of different... Different mids.
There's nothing worse than insulting, being foolish. This is the best thing concerning, this all your stomach stuff, waiting like over the parking field. You have to count it with the cup. Two hundred and fifty, fuck, it's two hundred and fifty, you had, I go to the bathroom one morning, she's there. It's crazy.
Yeah.
There's been houses too. Thank God you're big fans, are they? They, they, they were an idiot. He, he come out there.
You can't even hear that.
His body, his body, bless his, his axis. And she... And you think it's the old Southside, no, labor ratting place, yeah. It was humorous, if you wanted to.
Another one.
That we ever did. Well, I don't know, maybe that bad. There's Clayton, very silly. Not a big deal. Throw some trash over?
James says one letter.
I think you need to say some of the codes. Four, four, three, yes.
It was something funny that happened, it's not a big deal. Nobody... We had three bids on this lot.
Eric Getfordland.
Every one hundred dollars for the lot. So I go over to the house, and something else I said, I didn't get on that.
Must be different, fire somebody.
Twenty minutes, we'll have to fire somebody.
Pretty well I learned, you know, sit next to the best control guy on a hot day. Six quarters, thanks. Let me learn.
Yeah, that's just what I would think.
Had to... Had to wait sixty-eight years to learn that.
No, we're only one step up. Nobody from our crew. Cause they ain't one from our crew. And we want to go.
Yep.
That's a great, tricking in my book.
There's ways to do it.
Say up there, how many people want to see it?
Can this dream?
Someplace like that.
It was a good trip. They shut that off last week.
Yeah.
He was a senior. He come off.
Third beer, it's thirty.
He was just that way.
But that's other cat, the people.
There's time to come down from serving, get into his car, and you know, they make straight burn and preach. He's even forties, he's about, he's about seventy-nine. He had a lot of stuff. Eighteen, he walked in, and, you know, so he's... Yeah, nineteen, twenty-one years old, eighteen, almost half a million dollars worth of time for years gone down the...
I never had anything to do there and driving eighteen women.
I'm pretty sure that's right. I did, I, I did that, I, it took me a while. Some people have different, and I'm not gifted, I already know.
I watched Jack Jackson take long trailers.
Okay.
And backing into just places where you didn't think they'd ever get.
My dad could do that, too.
Hey, shook my head, and then Jack, I don't know how you do that. He said years of working on the pharmacy.
That was it.
Said six three, and they said, we come to the house, it's separated, and daddy gets a separate company, they're shot, they may have wear... And they have things that work out, and they may have... And here, up in the tree, there's a run, run, fish down the box, so... The key, he could do it. And I loved it, because he was in a structured environment, and he had, and he had... Right, but it's what happened is, the guy, he said, is he in sheep over there? The guy who was, yeah, he goes, I'm back to the American, and he goes, what's going on?
Yep. That's cool. Good, how are you? Get your building cleaned up?
Yes. They enjoyed it, because he was...
Just the house that they took down?
That's what's wrong. Brick story, it was one of the residences. Sitting in the door, hanging iPhones, bricks all around them for fifteen, twenty years.
They're going to save that old bank building?
That's right, teach me how to do it.
Guys, build, have plans for it.
That's a banker.
Just tell me to sit back and watch.
You're supposed to do some more work.
You gotta get over there.
You're supposed to do this one.
They got a roof on it.
You, you have to make sense, at least that's the way I look.
Need old buildings.
Yep.
I'm sure they probably could. That's what most of these guys do, whenever you restore those buildings, they get some kind of a grant. Oh, really? So there's no more resident in there? There used to be a resident.
Well, he tried, he didn't last that.
Okay. Yeah, lots of you, he used to go to that old Catholic church, right? George McConaughey used to go there. Same venues to talk about on there. Oh, that's right. That's our candidate. Oh, bubba. He would have carried. He knew a lot about politics and world events.
Anyways.
Mr. Reddler.
I was sound asleep, and I woke up, she's before we got ready to turn on, I told the driver, I said, you need to turn up here, and my baby's here.
Does he have a plan for the bank or business in there or something?
One time I heard this, thinking about making some of these Cleveland kind of things, but that's two years ago. I haven't heard that. He said, how do you do this? No, church. Some guy, I didn't recognize the man, but he's a local guy, he had a work center, or I don't know where he was. But he's going in there and putting about. Yes, and makes twenty-one thousand, about, new working machines in there. They take us. Plingers, saws, saw system, you know.
But is it using it or doing it? Going to be for personal use or business?
I didn't get him to say, I asked him. Well, actually, they got me to. And I was helping, he was there, he, like, he wasn't actually there.
I'm looking for somebody who's got a big jointer, one like that, cause he won us, like, all could want to join together.
He had a pretty good side here. I had twenty-four inch planer. Fitness planer.
Yes. That's a good one.
They were all... They joined it, they were new for business.
Really? Yeah, good thing.
They'll build a deck, but on the back, that one. I don't know what, I brought them inside, I didn't know, this thing, the new lights.
Does it got a good roof?
I think it had a good one. Got that tile over.
Oh, yeah. Does tile the roof last a long time, unless they get some winter hail damage? I wonder when that church was built?
It was eighteen ninety or eighteen ninety-two. Grandma, it's going eight ninety-two, and I think that's sixty-two. It might still be, I don't know.
Oh, I'll bet it's got a cornerstone somewhere.
It's what you get, you're going through, maybe you take it land there, and what do you want? And you go back. Yeah. How wide are boards, Arthur? Don't ask me.
Well, a jointer, I want, I want for the edge.
Well, just the edge?
Yeah, a jointer, not a planer, a jointer. Where you do the edge.
It was rough saw, and it saw them. The ideal way of making a natural is joint one of the base. You didn't go to the bottom, like, the top.
My uncle's been here.
Right. You can't just run an uneven board. Through a planer and get it the same all the time.
Yeah.
Twenty times, just a little bit of time to get it flat. But to get it, if you use a jointer, and that's one face flat, and you turn it over and plan the other side, then you... They make sixteen-inch jointers.
I wouldn't need that, throw a couple inches, just need something like...
Well, I'm talking about how wide it is.
The planers, you know, come, like you said, that planer's twenty inches. Put it on the side, you just want to do it once, the side, it's like throwing two boards.
Your board already surfaced.
Yeah, you stay down in San Diego.
Yes.
Beer bar?
Yes.
Okay, we have another motion. I move we create a floater position for the commission to help around the courthouse through October. Do, do we need to say what pays?
House to post the, yeah.
No, you don't say what pays.
Yeah, okay, all right. And, and we post it, post the job opening?
I will second it.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer bar?
Yes.
Isn't that?
Yes.
Beer bar?
Yes.
Isn't that?
Yes. Old business. And you want to move policies and procedures to the first item of old business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a moment, please. I just want to write this down.
Move that we take a short recess.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
You don't have to, just take a short recess. Wonderful.
I didn't know. Both tell me sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
You're good.
Sometimes I gotta go.
Same.
I'm sure I'll be taking another break at some point. No, we're making a floating position to help in all the offices. A floating position to help in all the offices.
I go for it.
Huh?
From commission.
I go for it, yep.
Just working. It's a little sad. They sprayed all his clothes and they updated his cuff. Could meet inside and turn it on. Right. So, we're sticking some. So, yeah, sir. Long time. Yeah, they can't wash it. You should be on that. You're always having problems. You're standing there. You're identifying.
First again, it works very good. Did you have to take a bath?
I'll have to look into it.
Okay. That's what my card is about.
Okay, okay, I'll look into it.
You promised to look into it?
Yep, I will.
So, no public comment today?
Uh, no. How nice. Maybe they saw the agenda and said, eh, we'll wait for the next time.
I'm not surrendering my agenda position, just my query question.
Oh, come on, Michael, it's a long agenda.
Okay, everybody good? Yeah. Okay. Old business, policy and procedures.
Yes, just a moment, please. Okay. I'd like a resolution. So, I, I'd like to move, we adopt employee procedures for deviation and the deviation form that goes with it to be adopted as an addendum to the employee handbook by a resolution and the same for employee procedures to improve overall function with the procedures with three named forms to go along with it. Personal improvement plan, corrective action plan, and formal written warning.
Is that your motion?
I guess.
Oh, okay. I'll second. Then move and second it. These are the ones that we.
Yes, yes, and, and, and really, a little more that I'll give to Susan to, or I can write it. You know, the addendum is to the handbook named Employee Policy and Procedure Manual dated April twenty, twenty-two, two thousand and two. To end, to the end of the handbook, it'll go to the end of the handbook to support multiple functions of the handbook and to supersede all previously written policies and procedures pertaining to the same likeness, the function of the new procedures, and then it will name them.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll bring that resolution back to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I will not be here, but I will make sure that my clerk understands. Okay, let me explain.
Yeah, just put her on the agenda and we'll.
Okay, I'll get with Micah. Okay, beer bar?
Yes.
Isn't that?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, continue the old business. Condemned house, city of Fulton.
Okay, I think Mr. Paddock.
Request for reduced landfill rates.
Correct.
Yep.
I received a call from Micah, is that okay?
That's right.
That she might have more questions for me?
Yep, yep, yep.
Want me to talk about it more or something?
Yep, mhm. You told me that you had that building in question taken care of. However, you were, you were working on some other buildings to gratify Fulton.
Just to fill you in where we're at at Fulton, like all small towns, no revenue, mountain thing, barely pay our bills. We have approximately six to eight condemned houses in town. Some of them are still standing, some of them are half fallen in. Some of them, we can't even contact the owners. And we may have to somehow get the property to the city, deed to the city somehow. Working on it, been working on it for two years. So my question is, if it's a, in a situation where we have permission to tear the building down, could we get a break on it to the landfill?
Okay, so we can't tell you what you can or can't tear down, you know that. You know, you need to follow the proper procedure in that. But after your last discussion when you came in here, Public Works collaborated with me, so in collaboration with Public Works Director, I recommend that we adopt a resolution in allowing incorporated cities of Bourbon County with the population under four hundred to bring CND waste at a rate of zero dollars for the gratification, gratification of Bourbon County. This is for buildings or structures condemned by the city and ordered for teardown, not for individuals.
Correct.
Okay.
To make that clear, we would have to own, own the property before we can do it, or?
No, you have to be.
The person that's wanting it.
The city has to be the one that's tearing it down.
Ordering it, yes.
So if they hire a contractor to do it, the contractor would need paperwork from the city stating that they tore it down for the city, not for an individual.
Correct.
Because I, I got a couple of concerns and questions. Back to the, to the building that's in question, does the city own it, or does, is there a private?
No, I made a statement last week that it's just exactly what we were talking about. The city recommended to the owner that it be tore down. He started to tear it down and pretty near got hurt. So he hired it, tore it down. And I told him at the time that I would follow this procedure and see if he could get it hauled off with reduced rates at the CND. However, he got panicky because of the deadline that he was on and the fines that were imposed. He went ahead and hired the guy that tore it down to get rid of it.
So it's gone?
It's gone.
And that's, that's preferred, if people tear down their own things and take care of their own business and pay for their own trash. But if the city has to do it, then we want to give the city a break.
Yes, absolutely.
I do, I don't know if the other guys do.
Well, to follow, follow up on that, we have one house scheduled to be torn down and hauled off by the owner by the end of May. So, that particular owner is, after years and years of discussion, has decided that it's time for that person to tear it down and haul it off.
So when the owner does it, they have to pay for it?
Okay.
And so if the city's doing it, then, then that's where you're getting a break. But the owner don't get a break, because then every owner wants a break.
I understand that.
So, so this is for the city and cities under four thou, four hundred is what we worked up.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Cities generally have a condemnation process that they have to go through.
Yes, we do.
Cities do, and so.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, uh, that's fine. About the resolution. I, I don't, I mean, I, if we do, I think sets precedence, I mean.
Let me give you one here, David, because Susan was nice enough to pull the resolution that we have with Fort Scott. So this isn't, this isn't uncharted ground. There was already a resolution made with Fort Scott for some trading stock. Here you go.
And we gave them a discount because we got, we got land out of it.
There you go.
But they're also not under four hundred, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't get it for free regardless.
No, no, they would not.
But you're talking about the little towns like Fulton.
Yeah, because they're getting a break, because they have, they have some trading stock, but those little ones don't.
Right, they don't have enough, they don't have a lot of revenue. I don't know if Union Town was disqualified or not.
They did, yeah. They, I think they were under.
Bronson.
Yeah, I believe it'd be Bronson, Fulton, Mapleton, Redfield, Union Town, we're all under. Looked up to me. You can double check that. So, yeah. If it passes, if they do. If you pass, then I'll do a resolution for you. And you can table it, David, and think about it.
Yeah, I know. I wasn't prepared on a, on a resolution. I did talk with the, with the landfill and they're not, I mean, they're.
Thank you.
When it comes to having that, having that much, I mean, of course, it's not as often as, as it seems maybe, but they do got pretty good fair rates as it is. And maybe not unbeknownst to everybody, but if you bring in rubble that is what they call considered clean, you know, void of wood and metal and other trash, just brick and mortar, there's no charge anyway. So, you know, brick, mortar, and concrete, so then I think that's kind of a reduced rate there. It makes people have to do a little more work.
Sort it, yeah.
I mean, I've, I've tore down my fair share of houses and, and it's not impossible. I just, I don't know. I'll have to study it some more. I would, I would ask that we table it.
Perfectly fine.
I mean, you guys got a motion out there now for the resolution, so.
Yeah.
I have, I have a second. No? I would move that we table it.
A second.
For a week.
There we go.
So you made a motion to table it for a week?
My motion died of no second.
For lack of second.
Right.
Yep. Okay, wasn't that? Milburn?
Yes.
Beer bar?
Yes.
Beer bar?
Yes. Okay, work comp procedures and benefits.
Yeah. This one was mine.
Okay.
It was discussed last week during the meeting about work comp and, and how we do those procedures. And I just wanted, I just wanted the commission to be aware that it is in our handbook how we handle things. And we followed the procedures. And if someone's out on work comp, there's usually, the first seven days is not covered. However, in severe instances, it can be covered. And so, if you have any questions about any kind of work comp issues, please, please come talk to us. I don't want to talk about the specific work comp injury. But we do, and I put that in our packet so that you could understand what the law says versus how we are handling things. And if, if an individual takes insurance, a lot of times, in most cases, we have just employee only. Lot of, lot of employees do employee only, and it's paid for. But anything that they have that's benefits that are voluntary products, and that would be like accident insurance, hospital indemnity, those are expected to be paid by the employee, because they're outside of the normal course of business. Might be a life insurance policy or something. So we do expect them to pay that. But I understand the, the idea behind if, if somebody had a family policy, that might be a little bit harder on them. But we do offer short-term disability. So there are things that we offer that could help with some of that. But with work comp, there's not taxes taken out. So generally, the employee is made whole. So what that means is their gross pay is nine hundred dollars, but their net pay is seven hundred. They're getting, they're not having any taxes taken out when they get their work comp check.
They're getting pretty close to their.
They're getting pretty close to their net pay. So they're taking home about what, and it usually covers any, any benefits that they need to pay. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understood how the process works.
And the other item, I went ahead and went through the book and I printed off another page. So I did see that it does cover sick leave, and it lets you know in the book, if we're following the book, that you use it, whether whatever happens occurs on or off the job. Now, we can strike my one down here, since we're covering it right now. The workers' compensation under ten B. Now, so since we just passed that resolution for deviation, if somebody feels as if they're not being represented by the book and that they need a deviation, they can always come and file a deviation form and set with the commission in the room here and ask and present their deviation. That would be my corrective action for that.
That's good. Okay. That's all I had on that.
Road closure application. Hang on here a second.
You want me to take this one here?
Are you, oh, he's still writing. On this, on the workman's comp, I would like to take time to, to look at, in the, in the book again. And then I'd like to table and discuss it some more next week.
Okay, okay. You don't have to table it, we could just bring it back next week?
Okay, yeah.
And is there anything you want me to bring back?
Well, I'll look at the, the, what, you gave me a copy of that, a full copy of that, of that manual, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right. Now we're ready for road closure application?
Yeah.
Bradley Plaster?
Okay. I move to publish Mr. Plaster's request for the road closure with GIS location to official Bourbon County social media page, local news, and certified mailings where appropriate.
Yes, we do.
Cities do.
And so. Yeah, I understand that. I just, uh, uh.
That's fine.
Okay.
Ricky?
Uh, about the resolution, I, I don't, I mean, I, if we do, I think sets precedence, I mean.
Let me give you one here, David, because Susan was nice enough to pull the resolution that we have with Fort Scott. So this isn't, um, this isn't uncharted ground. There was already a resolution made with Fort Scott for some trading stock. Here you go.
And we gave them a discount because we got, we got land out of it.
Right, yeah.
But they're also not under four hundred, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't get it for free regardless.
No, no, they would not.
But you're talking about the little towns like Fulton.
Yeah, because they're getting a break because they have, they have some trading stock, but those little ones don't.
Right, they don't have enough, they don't have a lot of revenue. I don't know if Union Town was disqualified or not.
They did, yeah. They, I think they were under.
Bronson.
Yeah, I believe it'd be Bronson, Fulton, Mapleton, Redfield, Union Town, we're all under.
Okay.
Looked up to me. You can double check that.
So I'll, yeah.
If it passes, if they do.
If you pass, then I'll do a resolution for you.
And you can table it, David, and think about it.
Yeah, I know. I wasn't prepared on a, on a resolution. I did talk with the, with the landfill and, uh, they're not, uh, I mean, they're.
Thank you.
When it comes to having that, having that much, I mean, of course, it's not as often as, as, as it seems maybe, but, um, they do got pretty good fair rates as it is. And, uh, maybe not unbeknownst to everybody, but if you bring in rubble that is what they call considered clean, no, you know, void of wood and metal and other trash, just brick and mortar, there's no charge anyway. So, you know, brick, mortar and concrete, so then I think that's kind of a reduced rate there. It makes people have to do a little more work.
Sort it, yeah.
I mean, I've, I've tore down my fair share of houses and, and, uh, it's not impossible. I just, I don't know. I'll have to study it some more. I would, I would, uh,
Sure.
ask that we table it.
Perfectly fine.
I mean, you guys got a motion out there now for the resolution, so.
Yeah.
I have, I have a second. I would move that we table it.
A second.
For a week.
There we go.
So you made a motion to table it for a week?
My motion died of no second.
Right.
Yep.
You did, okay, Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Okay, work comp procedures and benefits.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
No.
This one was mine.
Okay.
Um, it was discussed last week during the meeting about, um, work comp and, and how we do those procedures. And I just wanted, I just wanted the commission to be aware that it is in our handbook how we handle things. And, um, we followed the procedures. And if someone's out on work comp, there's usually, the first seven days is not covered. Um, however, in severe instances, it can be covered. Um, and so if you have any questions about, um, any kind of work comp, um, issues, please, please come talk to us. I don't want to talk about the specific work comp injury. Um, but we do, and I put that in our packet so that you could understand what the law says versus how we are handling things. And, um, if, if an individual, uh, takes insurance, um, a lot of times, in most cases, we have just employee only. Lot of, lot of employees do employee only and it's paid for. Um, but anything that they have that's benefits that are voluntary products, and that would be like, um, accident insurance, hospital indemnity, those are expected to be paid by the employee because they're outside of the normal course of business. Um, might be a life insurance policy or something, so we do expect them to pay that. Um, but I understand the, the idea behind if, if somebody had a family policy, that might be a little bit harder on them. Um, but we do offer short-term disability. So there are things that we offer that could help with some of that. But with work comp, there's not taxes taken out. So generally, the employee is made whole. So what that means is, um, their gross pay is, um, nine hundred dollars, but their net pay is seven hundred. They're getting, they're not having any taxes taken out when they get their work comp check.
They're getting pretty close to their seven hundred.
They're getting pretty close to their net pay. So, um, they're taking home about what, and it usually covers any, any benefits that they need to pay. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood how the process works.
And the other item, I went ahead and went through the book and I printed off another page. So I did see that it does cover sick leave and it lets you know in the book, if we're following the book, that, um, you use it whether whatever happens occurs on or off the job. Now, we can strike my one down here, uh, since we're covering it right now. The workers' compensation under, uh, ten B. Now, so since we just passed that resolution for deviation, if somebody feels as if they're not being, um, represented by the book and that they need a deviation, they can always come and file a deviation form and sit with the commission in the room here and ask and present their deviation. That would be my corrective action for that.
That's good.
Okay.
That's all I had on that.
Okay. Road closure application.
Hang on here a second.
Uh, you want me to take this one here?
Are you, oh, he's still writing.
Um, on this, on the workman's comp, I would like to, um, take time to, uh, to look at, in the, in the, the book again. Uh, and then I'd like to table and discuss it some more next week.
Okay, okay. You don't have to table it, we could just bring it back next week?
Okay, yeah.
And is there anything you want me to bring back?
Um, well, I'll look at the, the, what, you gave me a copy of that, a full copy of that, of that manual, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Got it.
All right.
Now we're ready for road closure application?
Yeah.
Bradley Plaster?
Okay, I move to publish Mr. Plaster's request for the road closure with GIS location to official Bourbon County social media page, local news and certified mailings where appropriate. And, um, uh, take into account any disputes, dispute regarding this before approval at our next meeting.
It will take. We probably ought to give it a couple of weeks because it'll have to have certified mail also.
Our meeting, two weeks away.
Two weeks?
Uh huh.
And in your packet, I created a new application form that.
I had the, the original, I don't know what I did with it, so.
Oh yeah, please bring that back. David took off with our original last week.
I always wonder when it went.
Yeah, I thought I brought it back, but, okay, so.
But on the new application, I put the statutory guidance so that it, that helps people that are applying for this. And then also every step that we're going to take.
Yep.
To, to get this passed, so.
So my motion just covers your stat, statutory guidances. And so if you do that, then you can still talk about it in a couple of weeks.
Right.
But it'll get the process started. So that just needs a second.
So we're gonna, we're gonna get it posted on the paper.
Yeah, yeah.
I will second that.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes. Okay, furthermore, on this topic, um, I me, I move we create a resolution to require petitioners to cover the cost of the administrated functions of the road closure, including but not limited to newspaper publications and certified mailings because they are gaining a piece of property there. I'm perfectly fine. If you want to table it.
No, I'm just trying to think.
Okay.
Because it takes us something about fees. What's, uh? I can spell them, I can get them.
Thank you.
I see no problems with, uh, requiring that, so I'll, I'll second.
Would you like for me to check with the legal before?
Yeah, check with legal before we do anything, yeah. Because I'm, I'm pretty sure state statute about fees we can charge.
And then I'll bring it back in resolution form if it's okay.
That'd be fine, yeah, if, if it's not in violation.
Yeah.
I, there's, I, I think the statute's just got a cap on what we can charge.
How much?
Yeah.
It shouldn't cost too much to.
No, I know, but we just gotta, all we want to do is cover the cost.
So you can add the, so you can add the cap to the resolution.
I don't know, publication costs.
I don't know, newspapers.
Newspapers, newspapers, newspapers aren't cheap anymore.
Okay, Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
So we table till next week?
Um, we'll just, I'll bring a resolution.
Okay, you're gonna pay the resolution, okay.
And I'll check with legal.
We'll vote on the resolution next week if we can do it. I just want to double check and make sure we can do that. All right. Human resources.
That's mine. Um, so with the exit of Commissioner Kruger, he was the human resource liaison.
Liaison for the commission.
Which I'm not quite sure what that meant. And, um, my understanding, you know, in our first meeting was that, um, that was something that you two agreed with, with Susan on in to, um, for the commissioners to take over human resources. But, you know, when I went in and got my, you know, canceled my benefits and all that stuff, um, I dealt with human resources in her office, so I'm, I'm just one clarification.
To be, he was never actually human resources, he was.
May I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we take on the payroll benefits, um, that's, that piece of HR. The piece that's missing is the disciplinary piece. And so when there's disciplinary issues, where do the employees go for their complaints? We have procedures in our handbook that talks about grievances if they have a grievance with their supervisor. And so there needs to be someone identified as that person where grievances are taken.
Okay, did we replace Commissioner?
We never did replace Commissioner Kruger.
Okay, so, somebody want to take that role on? I, I'm, I'm kind of got my hands full with some of the stuff I'm doing right now.
Well, if the commission is going to do it until they find, um, somebody outside the commission, I can do that for a minute, but I believe that we need to look outside of the commission to take that role.
We need to find actual HR.
And I think either that or we need to have our own in-house human resources. But, I mean, because we kind of got a, they do part of it, um, we were doing whatever, I mean. I really never quite understood that.
Here's what happens, you guys are, and I, I, all due respect, you're here of an evening and you pop in and out throughout the week. When an employee has an issue, they need someone that they need to go talk to pretty promptly. Um, that person, generally, you'll have an intake where you write down whatever their grievance is. And then whoever you guys assign that to could be that person that comes back to the commission and says, here's the issues, here's, we're laying it all out for you. You then can decide how you want to proceed. And that person can be your liaison, you could always have a commissioner sit in on that when you're having those conversations. Um, it's just very difficult for when there, there might be an employment issue or even a department had need help with it.
Well, and there's a lot of stuff that's in that manual that really HR person, we need an HR person to oversee anyway, so.
What we need to do is designate somebody now until we decide what we're going to do permanently or long term. And like she said, it probably shouldn't be one of the commissioners because she works and I work and you just go fishing, so.
No, I haven't got to go fishing yet. But anyhow, I agree, I mean, um.
Can we bring this back next week?
Yeah.
Can we, can we gather some information, bring it back next week?
Yeah, I agree. We've got more to, to think about now, so.
Okay. Sheriff vehicle request, sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
I move that we, um, fund this vehicle replacement until the insurance, uh, comes in and then, uh, for a total of, what is it, sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars?
Out of where?
Out of, uh, our general fund.
Okay.
On the second. Discussion?
Um, do we have funds in our general fund?
That's a loaded question. Um, you just, all you do is you reduce your cash reserves.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna get back whatever the insurance pays and then, and then.
Probably not very much.
No, and we are, yeah, and we had that discussion, but, I mean, we get, we need to fund that vehicle, I mean, they need that on the road, so.
If I may, I'd like to recommend paying for it somewhere else. Um, and, and I would like to pay for it out of the jail's sales tax fund.
That's what I was thinking, because it looked, you said there's money, yeah.
Yeah, and if, if you could, if I could give you some more information.
Oh, thank you.
You don't mind if I don't interrupt, please?
What is that? I'm sorry, I can't.
If I don't interrupt, if I can interrupt, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
There are statutes that govern in regard to vehicles for the sheriff's department, uh, follows under KSA twenty-eight dash one oh seven B as in boy. Vehicles for sheriff's department adapt these purchase, lease or payment of compensation. As you read through this, it basically says for the provision of carrying out the provision of duties of the law enforcement act, uh, for the sheriff, the board accounting commissioners may either purchase, lease or finance the operation of the maintenance of such vehicles and stuff. In that statute, it doesn't say anything about taking anything from any other funds, jail funds, V I N funds or anything else. Uh, your jail funds are just basically for the security. And what was the other term?
Safety, security, so I guess.
Basically what the jail funds are basically for. But this is the statute that actually governs that. So Mr. Beerbauer, Commissioner Beerbauer was on the right road going down and financing the, uh, the vehicle, so, whatever funds you get back.
And I don't think anybody was disputing that. Um.
But I just wanted it on record.
It was, there are other funds available and the general fund is so tight on money, I would recommend that you not do that. Um, and technically, the sheriff's funds are part of the general fund. And so if, if we were to, I mean, in all reality, if we were to move those funds back to the general fund where they should be because we have not ever adopted a resolution for them to be split out on their own. Technically, they are part of the general fund. And so as you are, um, bringing in inmate dollars for reimbursement, um, of services, those would technically be in your general fund revenue. Um, but I'm not even recommending that you do that. I'm not recommending you take it out of these operating expenses. I'm recommending you take it out of this, this sales tax operational funds where we've been taking out all the other vehicles because we do have a little bit of a surplus there. And so this makes better sense right now financially. No, no, it is not, I have not handed it out yet. This makes more financial sense for you as a commission to do this today. And then as we get through budget, we talk about, um, and you're welcome to have a copy too. Um, and there's one for Murphy. Um, as we talk through this, um, I reached out to our Raymond James public finance person because I wanted to bump our numbers up against each other to make sure that we're both on the same track. In this jail and courthouse sales tax fund, which is that point four percent that we were talking about earlier.
You want to ask?
Mm-hmm, yes. Um, you have a series twenty twenty-one bond, um, you have leased jail pods that are being paid out of there. And then we have some public safety leases that are coming out there as well. And those are for some cars that we purchased and some in-car camera video, that type of, it's capital outlay. And so those are, um, in twenty twenty-eight, those will be paid down. So then you go to the next column, there's total debt service. And then we have plans for improvements on this facility. Um, about three hundred thousand dollars worth of work that needs to be done in this building. And so I took that out. Um, in twenty twenty-five, uh, it was budgeted to move two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from this fund to help fund jail operations out of his normal operating budget. So we make a transfer every year for that. Um, during budget, uh, meetings with the, the previous commission, I talked about that's not sustainable. We need to wean ourselves off of that. And so over time, you see that number start to go down each year, about twenty-five thousand dollars, and that says jail operations. So we get down to the very end where we're no longer doing it. Yours doesn't have that one, you've got the wrong one, give me that one. This is my old one.
Okay.
And so this jail operations, we need to wean ourselves off of funding that. And so what we'll have to make up for that is actual property tax or revenue from, from, I've noticed our revenue has gone up significantly for inmates. And so those types of increases could help offset this move. Um, I'm conservative in our sales tax projections compared to what are, what Raymond James is showing on his. Um, he has a little bit of an increasing, um, amount in his sales tax, I keep mine level, so then I'm more conservative. He is your bond person, your financial advisor for your bonds.
Okay.
He's the one that set up the, uh, language for the sales tax. He's the one that came and presented to the commission at the time, which he is currently in the process and I'm supposed to reach out to him. It's kind of interesting that I've already reached out to him, he sent the same thing to me. He's supposed to come before the commissioners once the date is set to actually explain all this that's going on.
Once a day?
Once, once the date is.
Oh.
A date.
Once he's got the.
A date.
Oh, when the date is set, okay.
There will be a date set here in the future for him to come down and talk to the new commissioner.
Okay.
We go through this every four years because there's always a new commissioner or someone on the table.
Yeah, there probably will continue to be.
And so with that, I bring, uh, I bring him down, it doesn't cost the county, it doesn't cost anybody that. And he explains everything in detail to where the money's going and how, what it's supposed to be used for and stuff like that.
And so, um, as you get over to the very end, there's a running cash balance. And so you're going to see that even with our increasing debt service each year, we are still going to have.
Oh, your projected did not have any, you're going to deplete your funds?
No, we're going to have three point five million left over.
Oh.
And so there's, I know there's been discussions before you, Micah, about potentially, um, looking at moving a law enforcement center, um, for court out to that location. And so, um, as those discussions develop, we can kind of talk about those funds. But I just wanted to show you that the numbers are pretty, pretty darn close. He's projecting we're going to have, um, five point one million, but he didn't know about some of these other expenses that are going on, um, within, within the funds. So, good news is, sales tax is producing as it should and above. And so we're able to do some of these things that are much needed.
It started to, to go down and now, and then here, it's going to start raising back up again then, so. So it's going to continue to drop for a little while and then.
Yeah, because we were using money, we were transferring money from this fund for jail operations. I'm sorry?
No, 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 go ahead, I'm waiting.
Um, we were transferring money for jail operations and I, and we explained that that is not sustainable. And that was because they did not want to raise property taxes, that's why they did that.
I'm going to wait, I mean, because I got a, a different question, I want to make sure you're good.
Well, which one of these paths leads to not raising property taxes?
Well, eventually, this is all going to have to come back to the sheriff's office.
At some point in time, you're going to have to raise a bill levy to offset this cost for operations, either in patrol or corrections, it's just going to have to be.
Are they not on a neutral right now?
No.
That's the other thing to remember too, um, for people that don't know me, my name's Brian Murphy. I am, was hired by Bill as a deputy, also an advisor for the sheriff. One thing we need to remember is the money you say that we continue to bring in for the jail, that is not sustainable. That could change tomorrow.
Yeah, people could stop being good.
No, it's, no, the counties that we work hard to keep contracts with
Yeah.
could come in and say, we're not housing there anymore, and they'll pull their funding, it's that simple. And it can happen overnight. So the money that we do bring in is through the hard work of the major in charge of it to keep those things up and running and good. My opinion, having been a retired sheriff from Allen County, to me, those money need be, those monies need to be set aside in a separate fund in case there's a major problem with the jail. I ran the jail over there, the, the year I left, I had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar bill that had to change the whole HVAC system out of the jail. I had to come up with the money. Luckily, I had a fund similar to that and I was able to pull most of that out of that. But, again, these other counties can discontinue that at the drop of a, for whatever reason.
So you don't make any money from?
We do currently, yes.
Currently, but what do you say?
Only when they're out of county though? You don't make any money when you got in county?
That's a cost.
That's, that's a cost of doing business.
But you do have money that if there were something to go out, I know there's been a lot of repairs lately. Um, and if that was communicated, you know, to the commission, they could, they could use some of those dollars to help offset those costs.
And to, to elaborate a little bit farther if I may, we did something similar to this when we built our new facility. We had what was called a jail board.
Mm-hmm.
We brought in monies from outside counties to offset that, but, offset that bond payment, okay? We weren't always good on that. Um, we had one point in time and a couple of years prior to my administration, uh, where we don't, didn't bring anything. Uh, so we were out two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, we had to come out of general fund. So once that was paid for, our, our, our bonds were paid off, I asked the commission if we can keep that, that fund going. And I'd done my due diligence to keep those monies coming in to offset these large costs, should they arise. And lo and behold, the first year after we, we faded off, again, I had a hundred and fifteen. And lo and behold, the first year after we faded off, again, I had $115,000 worth of HVAC we had to replace.
What happens when the other communities and counties just start building their own nice jail? If you don't make money off of the people that are in the?
Then we don't have that revenue.
We lose that revenue. It goes away.
Eventually, I mean.
But a lot of where the revenue comes from on housing the prisoners is in jurisdictions that have an overcrowding in their prison jail.
And so unless they expand, so you're not getting it from little counties.
No, 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 no. Like Johnson County is one. I know they were farming some out, but they also had plans to expand. When they'd done their jail, they had expansion projects already built in. So when they got overcrowded, they started putting that money back in and rebuilding another wing, if you will. So Johnson County, but like Douglas County, they're out of space. They have nowhere to expand. So I know we house for Douglas County. I think we house for Sedgwick County, correct? Wyandotte has no room. Trust me, been there, done that, I worked for them. They can't go any higher. It's done. All they can house in house is 318 inmates. That's it.
And they won't, they're not, they don't have plans of expansion?
Oh, they can't.
Oh, they cannot?
No.
But they can, they can go to other counties?
Correct.
And so is there like a bid process? Do you guys got a bid for them to use you? Yeah, exactly. So.
So we've got to watch what we charge it?
Yeah.
And if it's quite a bid, and like Murphy said, they can go somewhere else?
Yeah.
So this is basically a bidding game. So we have to watch what we do, but we don't want to cut our own selves.
Yeah.
Don't cut our own necks for doing that. So that the last year when this was discussed, the jail populations in the area, except for two, which we had found out, Major D'Amico had done his research and stuff. Johnson County, which that's who D'Amico has close contacts with, they're not overpopulated, they're unpopulated. They have space.
So they don't need to use you?
They don't use us. We just were lucky enough to find that Wyandotte County was looking for people on Douglas County. Once again, it's that connection, that networking that Major D'Amico has, reached out to the sheriff.
Is that you?
No.
Major D'Amico, Luke.
Yeah, I'm Brian Murphy.
Hi, Brian.
As a contact and networking with the sheriff of Douglas County, which both Murphy and I both have networked with Jay, his first name, I'm not going to pronounce his last name.
Jay Russell, I worked with him at Wyandotte.
They had that working relationship from other things that they've worked with. And so that's why it got us into the door to make that. But like Murphy has said, all it takes is the sheriff to pick up the phone, say, mm, we found another place that's cheaper?
Right.
And we've had complaints from inmates. So with that, we're moving your inmates out. That can happen at the drop of a hat. It can be a phone call tomorrow morning. It can be next week. It could be six months from now. And when that happens, how do I replace it? There's inmates that are gone. So we can't really be dependent on this, on the funds that are there. It's not a guarantee. It's not a guarantee.
No, but that's what we have available today.
So I'm just.
So would you be opposed to using it while it's there? And then if your building needs maintenance, asking the commission for that?
That's where I had mine set up after I paid the bond off. The agreement with me and my commission at the time was, if I have a major expense, I will come to you and let you know, and we'll have that discussion.
Yeah.
And either we figure it comes out in general, or we come out with that money, that's fine. But we have that discussion ahead of time. I had no problem with it. I don't think the sheriff would have any problem. If you're setting on a pot of money, and it's going to cost X, Y, and Z, come to the commission and just say, look, this is what it is. Here's the bids, we went through it, this is what we got, this is X amount of dollars. Are you okay? You give your blessing upon.
If I understand you're right, that sounds reasonable, just to come ask when you need it. So if you use sheriff money from your inmate?
Jail money.
Population to pay for your car, that seems reasonable.
Those monies are used for safety and security of that facility, is what they're usually earmarked for. So anything that comes through the safety and security of an inmate, as in the building itself, maintenance on the water, the plumbing, you can ask the major. I haven't been here very long, but just since January, we paid $60,000 and plumbing on the facility out there. So that's money that could be used for that. But my idea is to set that money aside so it's not tied into the county general.
Is that typical to use?
Well, it has been since this facility's been built.
Yeah, there were some issues. There were gremlins. So we're not going to go down that road. Yeah.
So, and I think on this particular fund, that we discuss it at budget time in more detail.
Well, here's my problem. You don't have a lot of money in your general fund. So it would be better, it would be wiser for you to, I mean, and that's what you're asking me to do, is to give you suggestions on where we have funds. And I do not think the general fund is the place to go for this purchase.
If it's not the general fund, that's fine. If you're going to the inmate fund account, which was discussed.
It's not the inmate fund.
Or if you're going to the sales tax, the monies that do come in from the insurance, where's that money going back to?
Back to that fund.
That fund.
We'll go back to whichever fund we decide to spend today.
Just on what it on record.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
I mean, that's going to be a question when I walk out of here, the employees and mine are going, where's that money going to go?
Right. So if we were to give it out of your general fund, we would expect the insurance money to come back to us. If we take it out of the sales tax, and we'd roll it back into that, if we spend it out of your jail fund, then we'll give you that money back.
Go ahead.
I guess look at it from this perspective, just for you, David. It's not a budgeted line item for us in the general fund. And so we don't have a lot of extra, you don't have any extra money sitting there like we have in the past.
I mean, I understand that.
It was spent way down.
You know, and I think we need to spend it out of the sales tax fund for now.
Yes.
The one-time expense for it. Get back what we can after the insurance comes in.
And I think it all stays within that.
And then we'll start, we can start having the other discussions come budget time about.
Amend the.
But we've obviously got to get our car replaced.
Amend the motion.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I'll make a motion that we spend $66,000. I lost my play, $66,914 out of the sales tax fund for the jail and the public safety.
This is completely over my head.
I'll second.
I'm going to tell you that. I haven't looked at any of these numbers and known anything.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Was it in that? Was it in that?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
I think somebody else heard, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item G, budget. Schedule, S E K, mental health, and juvenile detention.
Yeah. Let's scratch juvenile detention. We'll bring it up at a later date. Still gathering information.
Okay, I'm going to talk about schedule.
Schedule, was that yours?
Yes.
Okay. You want to go first?
We need to, let me give you this real quick. Take one of these and pass it around. These are all the departments that need to come before you for budget. I also want to pass around appropriation history and what you're required to do by It probably needs a little bit of research on some other things that your attorney needs to do.
Was that two sheets, or did I just get two?
No, you just got two sheets, because I didn't separate them. I made you do it.
So the first one is, you have a good laundry list of pages of people that need to come before you. So.
Yes.
And I put who the elected official that's responsible for it, and then maybe who's reporting to the elected official. So if it was like a public works, it's Eric reporting to the commission, or Shane reporting to the commission. But, and then it gives you the statutory authority. You've had one person come through already. This is kind of just a running tally for you.
That was helpful.
Yeah. But I had created this budget timeline of all the required events that you have to hit, and we're running out of time. So we either need some special meetings, some different meetings you need to spend, you need to have some workshops, something to get us caught up, because you need May and June to get that done. Because once we get our numbers on June 15th, I need to start putting that information into the budget document so that we can turn around and determine if you're going to go R and R, or if you're going to exceed R and R. Because you have, on July 20th, you're required by law to have that figured out.
R and R is on neutral. To decide whether to raise the taxes or not.
This is my second week, and you guys keep talking about all this money.
We're going to know what our valuations and stuff are before that, what our total we want.
You need to take what, you shouldn't base it off of that. You should take in, you should listen to your department heads on what they need. And from that point, then you say, okay, we'll put it into the budget document, and then I'll show you, hey, it's going to increase your levy four mils.
Okay. Now it's starting to make sense, Mark.
And then you start cutting some things.
Cut it down. Okay, got it.
But you need to take what they're saying they need to operate.
Okay. So can I, may I?
Go right ahead.
So may I, I'd like to move for a budget work session this week. I'm just going to make a motion, and then we can discuss it and change the motion, okay? So I moved for a budget work session Tuesday, tomorrow, starting at 4:00 PM, and asked that we include an advisor to go in addition with Susan. The advisor I would propose is Greg Motley. He agreed that he would be an advisor at the rate of pay of $0 for his assistants to be included in this work session, or our work sessions until we get it figured out with that.
Is that because you don't trust me?
No, I mean, I think, you shouldn't have to. I mean, like, I don't think that I'm much help.
No, it's okay.
So, there you go. Here, you can pass one over.
You don't do very good at passing.
Yeah. So these are some, these are some.
Yeah, who do you want at it?
At the work session? Well, all of the commissioners, Susan, Greg, all of the department heads could come and present their things if they would like.
Nobody's ready.
Nobody's ready.
That's the problem.
Okay, well, then we can go and talk about it.
Okay, what do you want to, what do you want to talk about? You want to talk about how fund accounting works? Do you want to talk about?
Getting it started.
Okay.
Just getting it started.
So you provided this list, department to schedule for budget sessions. So we can start scheduling, is what we should be doing, is pick out off of this list who we want to hear from first.
Well, you probably want to do, this close to the discussion, you're going to want to start with your smaller budgets first.
Well, I was thinking we'd start with the ones that are under our authority, and then work our way out. That's.
That sounds great.
I mean, that's my, that's my.
Well, you changed the date. So Mr. Beerbauer added to it by saying he's going to start with the ones that are under the commission, and you make a date, and we'll ask Susan and Greg if they can.
I can probably speak. Eric, there's no way Eric will be ready. He's got way too many budgets. There's no way Terry will be ready.
What about noxious weeds?
No.
That's all under Eric, isn't it?
It's all under Eric.
Special parks, landfill. Well, I mean, if none of them are ready, I mean, what's?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard several times that we have to do this, we're behind, and...
You just need to set some dates for people so that they understand, hey, I need to present by this date.
What day is your?
My surgery?
No, I don't care about your surgery.
Oh, I care about your surgery. I hope you're okay.
Hope everything goes well. I don't, I didn't mean to sound like that. I just, no, what day is the solar people meet?
Wednesdays.
No, they're not solar, they're zoning.
There's, okay, sorry, the zoning people meet.
Solar was the previous commission. We meet on, they meet on Wednesdays.
You think can come and meet?
So. I think we could deregister, deeds could be there.
Okay.
I say next week.
Let's start next week, too.
Yeah. Well, I'd say, I'd say let's go down this list and, you know, break it down. You take so many, you take so many, and I take so many, and we start reaching out to these and say, hey, when can you have something? We need it now, not yesterday.
I'll take, I'll take mine now. I'll do treasurer, clerk, and elections, register of deeds, appraiser.
So reach out to them, find out when they can meet and give us. And then I'll take sheriff and corrections.
IT could be, probably, and so could emergency management. Those are the ones that are pretty, they're pretty steady.
And so they could meet sometime this week?
Start this week? Uh, next week, maybe?
Yeah, let's start next week. So let's.
I'll take landfill, if you don't, nobody wants it, I'll reach out to him and...
The problem with Eric, when he presents, he presents all of his together.
Okay, well, maybe we break him up on some of that, and that we're not having to do it all at once. Or do you do it all at once?
Do it all at once.
Do it all at once? All right. Then never mind.
Brian, are you sending an email?
Yeah, I'll do EMS.
Okay, I send you an email, but I leave for vacation tomorrow. I'll be back on the 12th.
Okay.
What about county attorney, anybody?
Go for it.
All right. I'll reach out to them.
You can have district court, too.
I'll do district court, too. Okay. And we'll just set up times and bring them next week that we want to have these guys present.
And I'll get a hold of it.
So what about, who does opioid fund? Is that you?
No.
No?
So you need to understand the statute on that one. It can only be used for very specific things, and we haven't released any funds from that fund. So I'll bring the statute and show you.
I just was curious as to, I mean, I've seen it on there.
Probably the biggest thing that you can give to is mental health.
Who's a representative for that, so?
Commission.
Yeah, okay.
Statutory, you guys are in charge of it. Next week is a horrible week for me. It's graduation week, it's softball. I just can't, I can't do anything next week. I could do it the following week, but you could have other.
I say next week, we bring in our schedules.
At the Monday meeting?
At the Monday meeting.
And then start scheduling out from there.
Good.
Yeah.
Or we can drop off some schedule, like, man, if you wait every Monday to try to hash things out, this could really get run down the road there.
We'll make it.
What's the, when's the R and R?
You've got May and June to get it all together. It would be best for, for.
How many sessions will this take to get it together?
Well, all they're going to do is present it to you and you're going to take the information, okay? And then I'm going to stick it in the budget and then you guys will say, oh, wow, we can't go up ten mils. So where are we going to start cutting? And then you can bring everybody back to the table and have one work session and really talk through.
That's the case, if they just want to present it, can they not present it in a?
Meeting.
It needs to be in a meeting?
Yes. No.
Because if they, if the, if the first phase is just for them to present it, can, can they email the, the information to you and then when it's ready, then we can bring them back? So they can email the information to you, we can talk about it, and then we can bring them back.
Give them a date. Now, what they're going to want to do is present to you their, their reasoning behind why there's increases. So maybe you say, present it, let her get it on the document, and then we want to call you in and ask you to explain your requests. You can do that.
They can do some reasoning over the, you know, in an email too. I mean, things we typed up pretty detailed.
I think you need to be very clear because at one point in time, you all discussed about having it more detailed. You want more detail in your budget request.
Yeah, we would like to know. Yeah, we want to know where the money's going.
Well, what I would like to see is spreadsheets because when you're presented with a, you know, this massive amount of information and you're just saying it, you know, retention on that, really, if you don't have like a spreadsheet with what they're asking for and their reasoning.
Would have everybody get their budgets, their rough draft budget sent to you, you put it in the deal. And then when we go, holy crap, you know, that'll make the budget go up to thirty million dollars. Then we call them in one at a time and say, okay, this, we need to know why you need this increase or this.
Well, I would rather do that than anyway, and so why don't we give everybody just the same date to have it to you?
Okay.
But can we have a budget meeting with, just to get acclimated on what, what we're going to be doing with you, the commission and Greg?
Sure.
That's what I would like to do.
Be a work session.
Yes, a work session. And that's what I believe I mentioned it as in the first place.
I think we can have a work session.
And then it kind of branched off there.
And then we can have a work session next Monday before the meeting if you want.
I can't. I can't. I, I'm out.
Can you do it on Tuesday?
No, my deputies don't understand the.
Oh, I mean, oh, okay, I was saying, I, I was thinking that we needed to have a clerk for the work, we don't need to have a clerk.
No, but we need.
But we need the finances.
Yeah, we need what's in our mind there. And. Uh, Greg? Will you, will you be available for whenever we make this? We want to work with you. I want to work with you to let you.
I have surgery on the seventh.
Okay.
With the thirteenth work?
I'm on, I'm in surgery on the thirteenth. I'll be out of commission for a couple of days.
So what's this, what's this week? Can anybody do anything this week?
Who are the old people? You retire, you get surgery.
I work Thursday through Sunday from six in the morning to.
So Tuesday or Wednesday? Can you do it tomorrow or Wednesday?
Can't do it tomorrow because I've got other obligations. I've got some V A stuff to do and some other stuff.
Our meeting starts at six on Wednesday. We could meet ahead of time.
Three thirty on Wednesday?
I gotta, I gotta pick my daughter up from school.
Four o'clock Wednesday?
I have to drive to Wichita.
If we're just having, if we're just having a work session and it's not really a meeting per se, then we can have it at four, I'll just be a little bit late.
Okay.
Have it what?
At four Wednesday and I'll just be a little bit late.
Okay. I mean, we're not calling, but you got to call a meeting to order to go into a work session. Right?
No, it's, it's an informal, it's an informal meeting. Yeah, you don't have to call any meetings, you didn't, you don't make any decisions, you just sit there and talk.
Yeah.
We start working it out.
I just have to drive to Wichita that night because I have mandatory election training on Thursday.
Well, it has to be done by the time you start your.
Six o'clock.
Six anyway, so it'll be four to six, couple hours of getting something figured out.
Okay.
Four o'clock.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Yes.
And I'll just, I'll just be a little bit late because I get my little one from school, so.
Do you want?
Which bar?
So, do you want just the twenty twenty-five budget document to walk through?
Yeah.
I think, I think it'd be a good idea to give them, you said the twenty twenty-five? I think it'd be a good idea to give them the twenty twenty-four and then they can compare it to, and they can see what's changed and, you know what I mean?
Well, you get that in the twenty twenty-five budget. It's twenty twenty-four columns in there. You get twenty-three actuals, twenty-four budget.
Actuals.
No, twenty-four anticipated and twenty-five budget. You get all three columns. That's the best way to do it is to just take that budget document and walk through it.
That's fine.
It'll be overwhelming.
It is overwhelming.
So, Wednesday, the thirtieth.
And that's.
Would that work for you?
Why I want to add another head there that's in finance like you.
Okay.
So. I'll get you a little bit of help.
Okay.
Because I'm, we're dead weight.
Okay. Gotcha.
I am anyway, I'll speak for myself.
No, no, you're not wrong.
Okay.
Okay, especially your first time around. All right, so then. I'll table the other two.
I did.
I'd ask the table.
I did provide information for you guys in the packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I guess since, if, if, since you did have this, this information on the, on the mental health there, it looked like there's a resolution that says that we're going to give them money, but that's not a, well, the optional need to read statute.
We do not, yeah, that's why I wanted to look at.
Or is it a resolution on there?
It's both.
Yeah, I wanted a table to look over that.
So there's, I only see the resolution, but there's a statute also that goes with it?
Yeah, the problem is.
So we just don't have the statute here with us then?
No, it's, they're listed here, you'd have to look them up.
Oh, understood.
But the resolution is basic, basically, I don't even know if it's been followed in the past. I just happened to.
Oh, I would.
Nineteen sixty-one, it's pretty old. It's pretty old.
Okay. Hey, can we, are we allowed to move back to the budget there? I don't think we ever gave a date to have, for, for us to put out to have everybody.
No, you did not.
So, we're, we're going to meet on Wednesday, but we can't give a date on Wednesday, we can't have any action. So I think we need to move back and give a date for, for everybody to have their requests in.
I thought we were going to contact them.
Well. Right, we have to decide on one date that they need to have to Susan.
And she can put it in the budget deal.
Yeah, and then we'll call them in for them to defend their.
And then we'll start calling them in to have them present their budgets to us and why they.
You won't have assessed valuations till the fifteenth of June. So you could give them, you know, a little bit of time to get all that information to you.
Okay.
And assessed valuations is what drives everything.
Okay.
Now, you could say, we're not going to spend any more money than we did last year, and that's R and R.
Which revenue neutral.
But if your assessed valuation goes up, and it will go up because property values went up nine percent on the average, and so that's new money coming into the county. And so if you take advantage of that new money coming into the county, then that would automatically take you over R and R.
Or you could leave it neutral and start to rebuild the fund that was depleted.
No, you, if you leave it to neutral, you get new, no new money in and you will have to cut expenses.
Yes, you stay, you stay living, you get to capture the new.
That decision doesn't have to be made tonight.
No.
Yeah. I think that's what we're going to discuss on Wednesday.
Okay. But she's saying you can't take any action on Wednesday to set dates.
Well, we won't, but I mean, I think, yeah, we, if you want to set a date to have them have that to you, we'd do that now.
You could do it in the May.
By June first.
You say June fifteenth is.
Yeah, June first. That gives me time to get it in and then I, because I'm going to be the one having to do all the assessed valuation stuff, but Matt has to have it to me by June first.
Do we still need to contact these departments?
No, not right now.
I'll just send an email.
Okay, because there's no phone numbers.
Well, and these people that are outside the organization.
County web site.
These people that are outside the organization like the senior center and they usually come present to you. So I can reach out to them and ask them to come present to you at one of the meetings. Okay.
But you're going to send them an email and let them know they have to have it to you by June first?
Yes.
Now, if they don't have something to you by June first, then what is your recourse for that?
I don't have any recourse. You guys would have to.
They just don't.
They just get money if there's any leftover.
Well, I'd say if they don't have it to you by June first, then when we schedule time for them to present, we're just going to assume that they're taking what they had last year or what we're giving them.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I think there's got to be a level of cooperation here.
I make a motion that we have all.
For everybody's benefit, but I don't have to chase, chase people down to get them to come in and do what we need to do every year anyway.
Right.
So, I will make a motion that all budgets need to be given to the clerk's office by June first.
I'll second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Bearbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Took us a long time to get to public comments.
Yeah, also, do we need to make a motion for a meeting? Uh, to Wednesday? Do we need to make a motion for that?
No, I'll just publish it that you're having a work session.
Okay, and do I, do I see that, that my, my first motion just to get this kicked off died for, you know, lack of second and obviously not really being honed into what we needed to do. So, do I need to motion that we add Greg as the advisor?
Yeah.
Because we're not adding everybody, so I, I again, want to, for our, our meeting on Wednesday at four P M, add Greg Motley as an advisor, making zero money for his assistants.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bearbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments.
Four o'clock, right?
Yes.
Public comments.
Public comments for items not on the agenda. I don't think we have any now, right? Correct?
Correct.
None, huh?
Finally, we get to new business.
Sorry. No, we've had a lot of stuff.
You're good. Uh, Michael Hoyt, legislative update.
I'll be very fast for you.
Commissioner, did you miss S E K?
No, we tabled it. We tabled it. Nope, thank you. I do, I do miss things once in a while.
If he has, that's something he wants to give us to put in our folder, we can take it.
No, he, no, no, he's not with S E K, he just was.
He's okay. Are you with S E K?
I'm with South East Kansas no more.
Oh.
I'm, I'm on their board of record.
Okay.
The one thing I can say is, I want the board to know that whatever the county decides to do with that, none of the money that comes from the county goes towards salaries or anything like that. It goes for people that can't afford the mental health care that they need. So we go ahead and give it to them and it comes out of that money from all of the counties that give to us. That's where that money comes from, which, without maybe we need to know that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'll go ahead and answer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoyt?
Okay.
Your turn.
Just want to make sure. Last week I attended the K A C annual meeting in Manhattan for, well, three days and then I stayed initial days for zoning officials meeting. The bad news is in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six legislative session, there were no bills that were passed between the two houses. The good news is there were no bills passed between the two houses. So, all we got was really information on what is being proposed by the House and what's being proposed by the Senate that looks identical. And I've only picked out a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention. We've always heard of the three mile zone around the city of Fort Scott. The state is going to, and they have an identical bill in each house, they're going to eliminate that three mile zone and it will be under the county's jurisdiction totally. So I think that needs to go into your zoning conversations, lots of, there's just lots of disputes on the League of Municipalities and the Kansas Association of Counties, how this should come off. So there's going to be some more discussion on it when it gets to the governor. But the two houses have an identical bill before them.
And would you agree that even if the, the, if zoning were to go into place at the county, it goes away anyway? That's part of the statute.
Well, there would be some overlap because right now that three mile zone is covered by the city planning and zoning commission.
But I think the statute says that if the county has it, then it doesn't apply.
Probably so. I mean, why would you, why would you duplicate the effort?
Right, right.
The other interesting thing is this, I believe this is in the Senate, they're going to limit the number of special meetings that can be had in any county to one per year. And it cannot be on March first, but it has to be the first Tuesday after March first. I don't know what the logic was there, but it was very specifically stated.
State overreach.
Well, I, I, quite frankly, I think it's First Amendment violation. Because if we want to petition our government with a grievance, statute says you have to have an election if I provide you with, as you know, with a sufficient petition, you have to have an election within ninety days. How's that going to happen? So there, there's more, there's more to.
Get traction?
Oh, yeah, it's get, it's, well, Carolyn Tyson, I guess, I can mention her name, she's just a public figure. She's the one that mentioned.
So it sounds like you guys need to write letters.
Special elections to one per year?
One per year. And then you can bring it up either.
Is it the Senate or House?
I believe it's in the Senate. And you can then bring all your special ballot items up in August or November. And then one in March.
Which I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm sure you are. Sure you're okay with that.
So they're telling us we can't have the meeting on March first.
Right, but it has to be.
An election, not meeting.
Special, special election.
Special meeting.
So special election.
Special elections.
Special elections.
Okay, special election.
Oh, I thought you said special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I.
That makes no sense.
No, 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 special elections. Well, that's what I thought you were trying it in on, on the election. Well, I've got some advanced material for you. This is the thirty-seven counties and Burbank County is not one of them that has responded to K A C with all this information. And this is costs of the state required services provided by the counties. Six hundred and fourteen million dollars, just in these thirty-seven counties that have reported, spent six hundred and fourteen million dollars for services that are required by the state, but they don't reimburse you for them. So they would like to get this information from you and they're going to hit you up this week at the clerk and, and elections officer meeting to fill that in in the spreadsheet.
Can you make copies of all of that?
That they have online.
Okay. Which I'm only going one day, so.
Well, they're still going to hit you up regardless. Then the, the last thing that I'll bring up is they talked about there's forty-three billion dollars for the properties that are exempt from taxes in the state. And of course, if you look on the back here, they, they list the counties and Burbank County's the counties, and Bourbon County's on here, but look at Riley County, they've got, uh, four billion dollars of abated properties. But think what's in Riley County? Questions? Questions? Answers? Fort Riley.
Yeah.
So all those federal lands are tax-exempt. And, and all of them make sense in here. We happen to fall right about in the high middle, where we have, uh, eighteen point six percent of our valuation properties are exempted from property taxes. So, that, that's a lot of money.
Are they taking in N R Ps in that?
N R Ps, I don't know.
Yeah.
If, if it's on that spreadsheet, if N R Ps are on that spreadsheet, then yes. Look across there.
No.
They're not capturing.
Do we have a list of those properties in Bourbon County?
I don't know, you'd have to ask your associate.
We'll have to ask the appraiser.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appraiser, whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would welcome you to take a copy of this, too. I'd just like it back.
Yep.
Can you make copies of all that?
Yeah.
I'm sure you can.
There were obviously lots of other rumored, uh, things, but everything fell to an asterisk, uh, depending on what the federal government does. So, and I would, would say that for your, uh, people that come in from the area agency on aging and Meals on Wheels, they're gonna come to you and say they had no government funding at this point, or no, no commitment for government funding right now. So, I don't know how we're gonna address that, because even, even if you gave them the same amount of money that you gave them last year, it's still not gonna, they're not gonna run, be able to operate.
Thank you for all of the information.
I'm always available for.
Thank you, sir.
That's only a tidbit of what we, we heard, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Micah Milburn?
I'm not worn out.
I need to take another quick recess.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, take a recess. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
That budget wears me down, and money, where it's coming from.
Give you five minutes.
Uh, well, okay.
I didn't know if you wanted it back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're, we're taking a recess, but that's something I think you guys can.
Me, too. I'm worn out myself. That budget's an energy drink.
Wait till we actually get started.
Well, just wait.
It, it only gets better from here, Micah.
That is an energy drink.
Sign owns four restaurants.
I'm sure he doesn't have four billion dollars for the tax payments.
No, it's state, state. They don't have to pay taxes, but they should show a lot of taxes away from everybody. Progress in, uh, Flint Hills there, too. It's Burlington, I don't know if it has a coffee. Thank you for the copies. Too bad we couldn't get some of that back. State money.
That was probably sent out last year, I don't.
Yeah. I don't care.
I mean, they're not gonna fund you.
I mean, I'm, I'm interested, I like that.
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're still not gonna fund you.
They're not gonna get the state to do much anything, anyway, or that type of stuff. Maybe, maybe, I don't know. It just sounds good. Six hundred and fourteen million dollars spent in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. That was just out of twenty count, twenty-three count, or thirty-seven, yeah.
It takes a long time to put all this stuff together, too.
Yeah. There's forty-three billion dollars in tax payments in the state of Kansas. Yeah. Maybe everybody should just pay taxes, and then nobody'd be broke. You know, if they were gonna go after some type of litigation, I would say, get one of that information, gather that information a bit. Are we ready? Yeah, I'm ready. All right, Micah.
Yep.
You've got the floor.
Sure. Okay, so the next item on the agenda would be, and I had something written up, and I lost it, so operations and job descriptions. So there are, uh, different, uh, you know, the larger, uh, I don't know if they're department heads, the ones that report to the commission, and then they have employees. Um, you know, I know there'd been some talk about, um, what the jobs did and what they're doing, and, uh, reviewing those, and, and making sure they're, they're up to date, and the job descriptions that we have are up to date. Um, and I know that, I think you've done some work. Do you?
Uh, that's, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that we're going into executive session on those items that we talked about last weekend, executive session.
Well, um, I just thought we could just visit all of the job descriptions there, all of the larger, um, departments.
I think, yeah, I think we need to get with the department heads and.
Yeah.
And go over the job descriptions that we have in books.
Yeah, there was a book, yeah.
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 Yeah, I got that book, yeah. I, I don't see a problem with that.
And, and do we need to do that in executive session, or can we do it out here and go over it out here?
As long as we're not talking.
If you're not talking about a person, identifiable person, you need to do it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it should be in work session.
Oh, you wanna do it in a work session instead?
Yeah, with them. And then, and then we will make a resolution to, to accept all them later.
Okay.
Same way with the handbook. I mean, if we wanted to go through and, and, and work on the handbook, we could do that in, in a work session, and then make a resolution to adopt, to do.
Okay.
Which should have been done, I mean, this is two thousand and two, we should have been, the last twenty years, every, every year, they should have been doing a review of that book and, and making a resolution to adopt it or make changes to it, which.
I know it's, it has an old date on it, but it's not a bad.
No, it's not terrible. I, I did read it.
No, I mean, I've, I've looked through it, there's, there's a lot of good stuff,
but there's a lot of stuff that I think.
Well, I don't have it, but in it, if you look, penciled next to, if you have a newer copy, penciled next to some of the things, there's a resolution number, so you can refer to that resolution.
Right.
So, um, as far as it, it, why is it on there like that? Probably because it's not in, you know, a format that you can edit it. It's probably.
It needs to be completely re-typed, because it's not anywhere in a work document.
Yeah, so then you could add to it.
But I don't have a problem doing that with job descriptions, getting with the, the each department head and looking at what we got.
Mm-hmm.
And see what they, you know, if they, if they agree with it, and that's how the, the person, that position is being handled, then fine.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think we've also looking at a different, uh, uh, format on how.
Sure.
From what it's written now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, so do you want to get together a, a work session for that? Well, we see how, um, kind of sparse it has to be, just trying to get three people together in a work session.
Or do you want to just like, uh, you go, you know, well, pick a person and go meet with this department head and show them what they got, and.
Uh-huh, and then kind of amend the thing, and then bring it back to the commission?
Yeah, that way.
Is there a format you guys want to follow?
Um, I have to.
Are there certain things in a job description that need to be notated? Um, some of those newer ones kind of have all the, whether they're an exempt employee, who they report to, you know.
Yeah.
Where their work comp code.
I can show you.
Those are all super important things for us.
Depending on how the rest of the night goes, I'll, I can provide you with something.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what, what, what are the, uh, positions, uh, that are the, the main ones?
Well, right now, we have, um, Public Works Director.
Okay.
Uh, that's under our authority, right?
Okay, yes, that's what I'm asking.
C O O, Chief Operating Officer.
It's also the I T guy.
I T, okay.
Emergency Manager.
Emergency Manager?
I thought, I thought he's.
He goes up to.
Okay. Appraiser.
Appraiser, okay.
And E M S.
Okay.
Which I don't know, have you ever looked at the job descriptions? Are there even job descriptions for E M S in the book?
I don't think I've seen anything.
Do you have job descriptions? Maybe?
It'd just be really nice if we have them, so that if you ever have to put them out, then.
On that, you know.
You can put it out.
You're either, yeah, you're either an E M T or a med, paramedic, or, or what, but.
And then I oversee all of it, so.
Yeah.
And you put, you put them out for the job postings, though, at the same way that we put these ones out?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'd be nice just to have something that, when you're putting out, uh.
Well, it's important to have.
For H R, it would be.
In the H R world, because we need them for hearings, we need them for work comp accidents, we need them for, there's lots of.
Yeah, so it'd be really nice if we could have those.
Yeah, 'cause in the, in the formats we're looking at, there is.
And.
Uh, physical demands and stuff like that that's outlined in there.
Yeah.
So.
We just want some books around here.
And corrections, I mean, that's a different, I mean, you guys are different departments, yeah. I know you have them on, on computer, at least that's what, what I was told.
Luke, I have some, some ones that were passed in to me that I probably ought to get to you that are, that are pretty recent.
Okay.
They just didn't ever make it to the book, so I'll get them to you.
Yep. But A I is a good source.
Yeah, A I. Spread force.
Well, it's been, the A I's been a lot of help, so.
So we just need, uh, yeah, we really just feel like we just need to, to go through and, and help the next guy that's gonna be in here and.
I just think we get something that's a, a, a working deal and set up on.
Uh-huh.
A yearly thing, and then by the time the next commission comes on board, uh, you know, 'cause we're gonna go into five in January, so then when one of them guys come on board, then as people are moved on into new elections, then, you know, the scene changes, then.
Yeah.
Hopefully this process don't.
Yes, okay, okay. Well, you know, I don't have a problem, uh, grabbing the book and meeting with people and saying, hey, what do you, what do you, what do you think about what you're doing here?
Yeah, why don't you start with, uh, whoever you want to start with.
Okay.
I, I, I make a, I make, I made the move that we have, uh, Commissioner Milburn work with job descriptions with the department heads in our, in our group.
I'll second that.
Milburn? Yes. Bear Bear?
Yes.
Wizinhat?
Yes.
Next item on your list?
Sorry.
Commission, communication to employees.
So, on commi, commission, communication to employees, so this, again, will go right along with, um, uh, the, what we adopted to the book earlier with, uh, like a deviation. So if, if, if the commission needs something of, of an employee outside of their, uh, job description, or outside of their norm that they do, I would like us to, uh, bring it to the commission and get a deviation, um.
I agree.
To do that.
I agree.
Rather than, I mean, I don't want.
And this is what, what we put in the book tonight, right? That's what we.
Yes, yes, and that sets, that sets a standard that, you know, if any new commissioner comes on and they just, you know, they don't actually know the job yet, and they goes, hey, I need you to go do this, and they can say, well, that's fine, here's a deviation. Here, take it to the meeting, fill it out, and I'll be happy to do it.
Okay.
That is all. On that one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Economic development.
Ah.
Tell me you signed a multi-billion dollar deal, and we're gonna get a bunch of property taxes.
No, okay. So, um.
I'm curious on this.
Yeah. So, uh, let me make sure I got the right line item. Yep. Okay, so, um. I want to consider this in our budget, and I just wanted to get it started now. Um, I know that, I believe that Bourbon County has given economic development money to, um, other entities to try to help bring economic development, uh, to Bourbon County. Uh, rather than that, I would like to start more of a direct economic development program, and what that would mean, and this is just idea, I would like to, uh, form a board or utilize maybe current economic development boards, where we have a little bit of funds set aside for economic development, maybe it's a very small fund to start with, right, uh, one year. But if we have the, the infrastructure in place for this program, then it could possibly grow. So if we have some economic development money, somebody could come and, uh, if we had a board created or a committee, um, that committee could reach out and find things and, uh, find a good investment for the, to bring to the commission and ask for direct economic development money. Not that we're paying any, anybody to do something for us to bring it here, we're giving it direct to the, the entity that's gonna do something for our county. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, do you have more of a plan that you can write up and show, like, what the board, I mean, what type of, you know, economic development that the board would be looking at?
Right, and so that would be for the committee.
Would they listen to people that would come in with ideas and?
Right, yes. Yes. And, and, and even a citizen recommended you could even utilize the city of Fort Scott. I think they have an economic development, uh, board or committee. And if they found somebody that was within the county that says they want to pop up something in the county, they could send them.
Right.
You know, they could just be looking for.
There, there is a.
Thanks to send to us.
There is a group out of, I think they're out of Chanute, that helps with grant writing and, and a lot of stuff that's provided by the League of Municipal, or not the League, Leagues of County, Association of Counties. So that would be a good source for us to, uh, if we need to. Yeah. I couldn't remember the initials.
And, but we could have a board, just like the board that you're, uh, sitting on and running, and it could be a neco, this is just ideas and frames.
And I like the idea.
We could just have a board that would just bring us ideas. They're just out there, so there's more feet on the ground, trying to do something.
Right, 'cause I mean, I know, I know of at least, I know of at least one business, um, that recently started here in Bourbon County, uh, that, uh, when she didn't get no help. I mean, she, she did it all on her own, did all the research and stuff.
That would be what this would be, it would be a.
And, uh, hopefully she'd be one that would want to come sit on the board, so.
Yeah, and, and really, and that kind of thing, that is what the economic development board could help, start something up.
Mm-hmm.
Direct, like.
Well, I know the Chamber has a small business deal that they provide, and I think that would be something that we could, we could work in conjunction with the Chamber, too.
Yeah, so if you guys like that idea, we just would like to, I'd like us to keep it in mind when we're setting the budget, maybe put some money in that.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So that is all on that.
Okay. And then you didn't need workman's comp and sick leave?
No, yeah, we moved it up, yeah.
So, relocation of offices. Where Shane, Mr. Shane Walker? We're gonna talk about relocation of offices.
Has he already got a copy? Oh, you sent it. All right.
It's your office, too. So. Let's look through that first. It's laid out mainly to get the offices in areas that they can have all their documents together. Well, you can't talk about your election equipment, or security, or where it's stored.
And I can't have the pictures on here.
No, you can't have the pictures.
There are some things in this document that would have to be redacted because of security for elections, or, their, election stuff has to be secured a certain way. And so, anything that talks about elections in here, if it was handed out to the public, I would have to redact it. I just want to make that very clear.
Okay.
So. And it shows you the situation that we're in. When we do an election, we have to test every machine. There is not space in the clerk's office to do that in a closed off area. There's not space in the area that we do it, and so.
It's supposed to be kind of outside of the public. You can't just.
Yeah, and there's sometimes that some of it's public, and some of it's not public. And so, we just have to be very careful when it comes to elections.
This gives you guys the bigger meeting room you guys were talking about.
So, so in, I, I see here in your, um, your, uh, presentation, you have the space would allow commissioners to face the attendees and attendants, which is more, and let me, let me tell the, the people out here, 'cause we're just reading this thing. Um, so, so this, this document is proposing a move of offices. It proposes the commissioner office moves, um, the clerk's office moves, the appraisers office moves, uh, any more.
I T.
An I T office moves.
And emergency management, I think, is the, just the nine-one-one.
The nine-one-one's part of it, kind of.
And so, um, in, in, in this, uh, proposal, it shows the, um, the space would allow the commissioners to face. to face the attendees, so I'm guessing there's maybe, in their proposal, they have a long table and everybody would face.
This table.
It just breaks.
Yeah, this table splits in the middle.
Oh, okay. Okay. And so, so do you, do you wanna articulate out loud, so, so everybody knows, what, what offices you proposed to move where?
The appraiser's office is the biggest office that would allow the space for you guys to have fifty chairs for meetings, a minimum of fifty. He would move into the current office where I am with Jimmy, cause we don't need all that space.
Yeah, Jimmy don't like that office.
Yeah.
He already told me, he already told me, you gotta, you gotta, what is it, what did he say, you have to run the air conditioner in the winter because the boiler is right underneath it and it's smoking hot.
If you're willing to take that on.
And that's perfect for the ladies in my office.
That is, uh, he does not like that spot.
Maybe it agrees with my office, so that's perfect for them.
And then we would move into the little offices over here, and then they'd let Brian have that one office with us again.
So, appraiser moves to boiler's dungeon and you move to.
Clerk's office.
The clerk's office.
You move to clerk's office?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the clerk moves to commissioners' offices?
Yeah.
And, um.
You guys go to appraiser's office. Which has the office in the back and.
Right, has my office, so you can do your inspections in there, there's plenty of room.
Plus you could keep your file cabinets in there, and we talked about putting a couple of computers like workstations in there like we did for this one.
And, and the biggest reason for this is, imagine walking into an office and resolution books are in four different places, files are in four different places, some aren't even documented, you don't know what's in them, there's one room that you can't even walk in, cause it's just shoved in there. So when somebody from the public comes in and you have to fill a court request within three days, you're, you're scrambling to try and figure out where it's at. So, um, I don't know how Jennifer did it, I really don't, or even some of the previous clerks, because there is information everywhere in this building.
In the old clerk's office upstairs, they had a massive vault with fourteen foot tall shelves that'd hold hundreds of books, so when they moved out of that, the stuff got dispersed around in different locations.
So it's not all in the, that office, it's all over the place?
No, it's in the basement, it's back here in the old jail.
And some documents can stay in locations, but there are some that we get into often
Will this allow you to have that additional space for a lot of the stuff I'm seeing stacked up?
Yes, yes, yes. As you notice that.
Maybe even a better system than the.
Yeah, you notice we're sitting in the floor so that we can do election.
Yeah.
So.
That was just a bad location.
And that was a small election.
From the beginning.
Yeah.
When they picked it, they just, that current clerk wanted a little office, didn't want a big one, and the stuff got put where we could put it.
Okay, so, what I don't see.
It's cost.
Cost.
Yeah.
Well, the only cost we'll have is either partitioning this room in half or building a little wall.
What about the moving of the electronics and stuff?
Well, the electronics, Jimmy and I do all that.
Okay.
We'll probably have either Duns or Woods come and help move some of the big heavy stuff, cause they have the equipment to do it, but other than that.
Well, this is the only one that would require construction.
Yeah, just this little thing here.
And more willing to just do.
Back to the original.
The partitions.
Back to the original.
Yeah, like it was, when Harold was the sheriff. The partitions would actually cost more than just building a stud wall.
And what is the partitions for?
To separate this office.
So you'd have two offices.
You basically have a.
There's an office here, though.
Right, there's several people.
Oh, so you need more than two offices, you need several offices.
Yeah.
And then you have your public access and.
And you still have the whole, my, the person that's handling payroll and benefits needs to have their stuff secured to the, you know, you've got personal information that you wanna make sure you can lock up.
They wouldn't need any more furniture, anything like that, it's everything where.
We have all the furniture.
I, I would say it gives you a nice big commission.
Yeah, I like, I saw that room today, I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
I, I'm not a.
Considering my original idea, it's gonna be more costly, so.
I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to people needing the space they need, you know, we're not here very much, I do want to, I don't wanna just say do it and, and make it happen and.
Your cost estimates.
Yeah, cost estimates, and then I'd like for anybody that maybe, it, it does not, you know, that, that maybe has a different opinion to build it, have time to come forward and, and say if they, they, you know.
Someone within the building?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Someone within the building.
Everybody that's moving is, now Jennifer couldn't come tonight.
That's what I was reading.
Yeah, Jennifer's the only one that's not here that would have any.
But I, I would, I mean, if you, have you looked at, at the.
Other areas?
Went on a tour with them to look at the other areas, then maybe we ought to wait and let you do that.
Yeah.
See what, see what, I mean, I saw the plan today, so I thought it would.
Oh, okay, you went on a tour already today.
Yeah.
The logistics of it is the problem, which will have to work out. We'd have to do it when typically they would do some offsite meetings, you know, like Union Town, Brownson.
We plan on doing anyways, having.
We'd have to do it during that time, like where you're not utilizing this room or that room. And we'd probably do it around Memorial Day time if possible, gives us extra day.
We could schedule some offsite meetings for that time for you.
Yeah, just, and make it to where.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to move half of it.
Okay, what I say, on, right now, is, have you toured already? Yeah, so just allow Commissioner Milburn to.
And then get us, get us the prices for building the wall and.
Right, and get us some costs.
Estimates for getting help moving the heavy stuff.
Yeah.
And, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, we need a bigger room, cause.
Yeah, the mobile stuff's simple, both of those guys charge us two hundred bucks an hour for four guys to work, so, to move all the big stuff, so.
Yeah, get us some costs.
Get us some costs and, and we'll, we'll start thinking about some remote meetings.
If I may, can I take these back and then if anybody from the public wants them, I can redact what I need? Thank you.
Take those pictures and stuff out.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
That was heavy. Usually they flutter.
Update on sales tax for the ER?
Um, in your packet was Freeman's emergency room sales tax information, and then there's been some concern about that. I did speak with Freeman and they were wondering if they could, in the agreement, it says that they will do it monthly, produce expenditure reports, would it be okay to do quarterly? And if so, I'd probably need a motion because in your agreement, it says that you will, they will do monthly, we just need to, they would like to just submit them quarterly, which I think is okay. And then we've released all the funding up through February, Marches has not hit the general ledger yet, and so I really couldn't release it, cause you'd be in the negative, so, until the treasurer posts that receipt, I can't release that money, but as soon as it does, I will release it as we receive it to Freeman as per the contract.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so on, on that, that part right there, the, the, the money, on the releasing of the money, I was, I have not seen, cause I didn't see the agreement, do we have copies?
I sent them to you.
Did you? Are they in the?
I can send them to you again, I think I sent them by email.
Okay, let me double check that.
Okay.
There was some question on, on that about, I don't know, not so much on the releasing of the money, but the, the reporting that there was, it becomes public information if it's in your office, and, and with the way Leroy had it set up, I, I'm confused as to what the agreement said.
No, cause it's proprietary, so it would not be open to public inspection.
So where does our advisory committee fit into this, off of the previous commission, they gave them oversight?
Wherever you want them to fit in.
Okay, so, cause I, I'm kinda getting, I, I don't want, you know, I, I met with, with, I've talked with Freeman too, since I took over that deal, and, I mean, they're, they're willing to work at, you know, whatever is best for us, so, I don't wanna knock them guys out of the loop after all the work that they did and stuff, and I know what the previ, I'm not sure what the previous commission's exact wording was, but.
And I don't know what their expectations were of that group either, so.
Okay, so, maybe we need to have a meeting with that group.
Yeah, yeah, you guys just let me know what you wanna do, but I know that they came in and asked if they could do it quarterly instead of monthly.
Okay.
And if you want that group to do the review, that's fine, just need to.
I think they, I mean, as far as, cause they are a representative of the, of the citizens, so I think having them involved in it and being, at least seeing the information.
Okay.
And know, so that they can say yes.
I'm sure they still wanna be involved.
So are they gonna certify back to the commission that they've looked at it and everything's good?
Well, I would say it'd be the information that you get, that they can come in and look at it.
Okay, is that, is that how you wanna handle it?
Well, I think we need to work it out.
At what point does that become proprietary?
Well, if it's, it depends on what their expenses are.
I'm just saying, keep them in the loop, but I'd say, we'll have a meeting with them and in that way, we get an idea of what, what, where they're at and then what we want, but I, I don't, I'm not wanting to take it away from what you're already doing.
Oh, I don't, I don't care, I don't wanna do it at all. So, I'm just, that's what I'm charged with, so if, whatever you, I mean, it's a contract that is between the commission and Freeman.
Right.
So you have no contract with this advisory group, this oversight group, so whatever.
The previous commission gave them oversight.
Well, the intent was to have transparency as to what the money was being spent or if we ever wanted to claw it back.
Right.
So, that's what I would understand, at what point does this become proprietary or secret? It's not.
I didn't think, I thought it was all just gonna be presented to the commission, that's, that's what I thought.
Well, I'll have to go back and look and see what them guys, cause I mean, it was in a meeting that they gave them that authority or gave it over to them.
Well, I think that, I think that group wanted to make sure that the money was being spent as it was, said it was going to be spent as.
Yeah.
In other words, we was actually giving them the sales tax money like we said we was gonna.
I mean, you see it every time it goes out the door, it's going to Freeman.
Right.
And you can see that in your financial statements, I mean, everything.
We also wanted transparency as to what they were spending it on, we don't wanna be funding constructions and jobs.
I think we can.
Construction here.
We can.
But how, how would you really know that?
Well, we, we're, we're giving our full faith and credit to whatever they report to, that's why I say it can't be proprietary.
Yeah. I mean, if they're spending on wages, you have to take it, wages at its, yeah, at its, they can categorize that as wages.
Well, I, I mean, we had, I'll just need to look at some of the, the agreement and I'll look at, at what was, was passed, I mean, in our resolutions and stuff like that, I'll, I'll look back at it, I'll look into it more, more detail than I'll have already, so.
Okay, so do you want me, so do you, what would you like for me to provide to you?
Nothing, I, I, if you said it, I got it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, if I do, if I don't, I'll call you.
Okay, perfect.
And then they're wanting, Freeman's wanting to do a quarterly report instead of a monthly?
Yes.
I, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah. But they'll need to know who the quarterly report goes to, that's the thing, so who does it?
Well, the way I understood it, with, unless Leroy changed it, was that it was me, or, or to that commissioner that was the connection, was supposed to get the, the updates, and then, but I didn't see a problem when, when, and so that's why I didn't know if he changed it or what, cause I don't have a problem with it going to your office, especially because you, you got a place to keep the records.
I am the official record keeper, so.
So even if I got it, I would go back to you anyway. So, I mean, all I want is, is, I want that transparency as to, you know, that we gave them the money and that they're using the money, you know, off those reports.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay.
So I guess we need to make a motion if we want, if we're okay with them going quarterly.
Yeah, I make a motion that we allow the monthly reporting to go to quarterly reporting from, on the ER sales tax.
A second.
Huh?
She's seconding it.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Milburn?
Yes.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Wasn't it?
Yes. Financial update? I feel like we've talked about.
That's all that was. I just said I released the money to him.
Okay. That was the financial update. Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that more.
Department updates, Mr. Eric Bailey.
He's bringing a box.
Never know, it might be something.
What's in the box? What's in the box?
It's rad.
All right. Mine's gonna be quick with some exciting news, what I feel is exciting. I did a look a while ago on our HubWorks computer program, we have four new colberts to put in, so, that, that helps you know that. Now, creek update, the roof is on the house, made it through the weekend with no leaks, so that's very exciting.
Outstanding.
We're headed to what we call Shelter House Two, which will be the shelter house located on the northwest side of the lake, want to start this week, but I do not believe Mother Nature is going to allow that. We're just hoping, pray she doesn't take the roof off for us, so. Sixtieth and Grand, the bridge, they opened bids, got very, very, very good news on that, came in right at engineer's estimate, or right around engineer's estimate, low, low bid was seven hundred and one thousand four hundred and four from B and B Bridge with an addendum on it, I forget what the, that amount was, like six hundred and some dollars, somewhere near, it came to a total of seven hundred and two thousand and eighty-four dollars for their bid, when you put construction engineering, everything like that, the total for the project is nine hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. So that came in under.
What was it again, I'm sorry?
Nine seven six six seven three, I'll give you all this information.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, with that being said, our cost, our share is zero out of that.
I like that number.
We did have to pay for preliminary engineering and the purchase of a little bit of land, which cost us right around, give or take a hundred thousand, so, you say one point one million dollar project cost us a hundred thousand dollars, so, and we were getting a bridge replaced. If you so agree, I need to have you make a motion, pass that, and then there's some signatures on here that's needed, and Susan will have to attest to it or what have you, so however you wanna do that.
Brendan, in that red folder, there's a whole bunch of stuff you guys need to sign too, that you already approved.
Oh, yeah, we already voted to pass that, we'll sign that in a minute.
Is that just the construction contract, or is it the grant?
There's paperwork on it.
So you have the bid award?
Just where we saw.
Bid on the order of probably construction engineering.
We gotta, we gotta make a motion to sign it first.
Oh, we gotta make a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we sign and approve the, the bid for the Sixtieth and Grand project.
I'll second that motion.
Milburn?
Yes.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Wasn't it?
Yes.
I think there's one for the chairman and two for the other commission.
Yeah.
And one spot for the clerk.
And one spot for the clerk. I've already signed it. Can you give me the copies on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is our federal fund exchange has been sent to us. What that is, is federal transportation allot so much money to each county. This year, we was, we were allotted eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine point one five. What the state has allowed or will do is they will give you ninety cents out of a dollar, for each dollar, and then that portion for us will be seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents. The reason that the state has done that is it's so hard to follow all the federal regulations, from the environmentals to the paperwork, what have you, that has to be done, special paperwork. So, counties have went to the state over the years and put this federal exchange program in effect. We were budgeting, we were hoping for seventy-five thousand and we ended up with seventy-seven, two, ten, twenty-three this year. So, if you so choose, I would need, I believe, a motion in order to accept the seventy-seven. I would recommend we go...
And what's that used?
We will take that money and use it to buy like oil for our hard surface roads or chip and seal, or we can use it for maybe partial for a blast, I believe. We've used it for that as roads.
So there are specific things that they require, yeah, yeah.
That has to be, that has to be used for.
Anything to help offset your costs?
Absolutely.
Do they still let you build that up over time and take it in on one project?
No.
And this is what you send back to explain?
That's what we send in.
To explain what you're spending the funds on?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and you know the compliance of what you got to do?
Yep, we've done it for the past four, five years that I've been here.
I move we sign, oh, I'll let you all look at that, I'm very sorry.
Okay. Yeah, they used to have to stack that along each year and do big projects.
Tick tock, tick tock. This is probably the longest meeting we've had.
I was only one there a few times, that wasn't my fault, right?
I don't know, you're the new one to the group.
I know, I know. I was going to take, take the shape of all of it.
Second meeting and another...
You have that for a while.
Yes.
Two and a half, almost, okay, go ahead with your motion.
The numbers are on that.
Okay, so I'll make it then.
Okay.
A motion that we accept the federal funds to be exchanged through the Secretary of Transportation, available at seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents.
A second. Beer Bear?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
I think it just gets here.
Yes.
I guess.
Yeah, give me that back.
Does that some need signed?
We don't sign it, I think, I think it's all for that one.
Next thing I have for you, Norton National, city limits ends on the north side of Mill Creek. Goes out, has, our responsibility goes all the way out to the convenience store then to Fifty-four Highway. Well, if you'll notice along there, there's no speed limit sign. So technically, in the county, you can fifty-five on, on a no bar.
Up to thirty when it hits.
And then it's thirty as you come back in. So, I visited with Hunter Sheriff Davidson and we, we looked at that and I've had several citizens approach me about that and I would like to recommend we place thirty mile an hour speed limit signs there, because when you come into the city of Fort Scott and you get right to the Marmington River Bridge, there's a thirty mile an hour sign there. So, with the Juco dorms...
And it's a stop sign once you get to the, to the, around there at...
Come around that curve, yes.
North Crawford, I think is what that's called.
Yes. If you're running fifty-five there and trying to get that shut down as you come around the curve there, that's, that's pretty excessive, so...
I don't have a problem.
I make a, I make a motion that we drop it to thirty mile an hour.
Yeah. One second.
We'll, we'll post that all through that section, all the way from the convenience store back to the Mill Creek.
What word is that?
Yeah.
Norton National and Humboldt or...
Humboldt's...
It goes to two hundred and eighteenth right there, because I, we, the other day it was weird.
Two hundred and eighteenth is on the other side. I'll, I'll give you exact...
I just need to know the language to put in that.
Yeah, exact names on there.
Okay. Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
And then, last thing, I'll just tie these together. We have a road closed at two hundred and forty-fifth and Maple. It's closed from Fifty-four Highway to two forty-fifth. It's right there in the curve. We've had a thirty-six inch tube, about eighty foot long, fail us from the storms and what have you. It's completely, was it all galvanized, completely rotted out.
Good, so on what road again?
Two, it's right at the intersection of two forty-fifth and Maples, Maple. So we've closed down at Fifty-four Highway and we've closed down at two forty-fifth and Maple. So, we took a pretty hard hit last week with flash flooding that we received. Seeing quite a bit of damage, seeing some tube fills, culvert failures as well. So, guys working very hard trying to get around, getting everything open back up the best we can for time being and move forward with that. A little bit concerned with the amount of culverts that we're seeing damaged now that we're probably going to have to buy some more. And we haven't received any of our FEMA money back yet from previous, so it could be tight budget wise to get through this, but...
But you do have money coming in from the, from the big flood?
We're, we're hoping to have, we're working through the paperwork. Right now, through category A, which is the debris removal. So, they sent me some paperwork there Friday, so I've got to review and see, so I can't give you exact dollar amounts on the preliminary. There's various stages that we have to go through, but the debris removal is the first, first one.
And I'm guessing there's certain money, certain way you have to defend that spending as well. And, but you're prepared to do that.
We're, yes.
From a long time ago, right Eric?
Yeah, so you just, so you've already documented it and prepared to defend it.
Yeah.
We had a really bad one in what, two thousand and seven?
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
And, oh, it was a nightmare, but you learned from it.
We did learn a lot on that, so. That being said, that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Yeah, I have this time. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see what you did here. You just let me put everything on there, I wanted to teach me a lesson. There you did, worn down.
Did it work?
Yeah. Wore me down. Let me, what you did is you let me wear myself down, that's what you did.
Executive session.
Just like my kid.
Non-elected personnel.
Is that one mine?
Yeah.
Yes, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen. B one.
Uh, let's do ten.
For what?
Ten.
Job performance?
Yes, yeah, I think that's what they said, I think, or yeah. Is that what you said, B one?
Yeah, B one.
B one?
Yes.
Okay, so...
To discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Who needs to be in there?
Uh, just the three commissioners would be fine.
Okay.
Let's just do...
It'll be the three commissioners.
Let's do, let's do twelve minutes.
How long?
Twelve minutes.
Twelve?
Is that okay?
No, that's fine.
For twelve minutes, so we'll go to nine oh two.
All right. Uh, I need a second?
A second.
Beer Bear?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
I'll knock on the door.
Thank you.
Did you do executive session? Did you do the executive session?
No, I don't want to talk to you do.
No, sorry. You like...
We didn't do it the last time, we were all on camera. Flipping them over. Get people something to talk about, I guess.
His, his family were the ones that prefer trainers and that all of them kids. Because he's my age. When I found out he was a senator, I like to die. Did he went to Fort Scott High School? I don't remember if he went to Fort Scott.
I bet he went to Uniontown.
Went to Uniontown.
Well, he might.
I don't remember him being at Fort Scott High School. I just knew what was. At least about ten years ago.
Okay. Muscles in normal session with no action at this particular moment.
My second.
Uh, Milburn?
Yes.
Wasn't hot?
Yes.
Fairbar.
Yes. And uh.
How long do you need this time, David?
I'd say another twenty minutes.
Oh, you want another executive session?
Yeah, we're gonna do it again.
You learned your lesson.
This was uh, this was the second one we had, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, uh, execu- I moved that we go into executive session, non-elected personnel, KSA seven five dash four three one nine B one, uh, non-elected personnel job performance. Three, same three commissioners and public works director Eric Bailey.
A second.
For twenty more minutes, you said?
Twenty minutes. So we'll be back at nine forty-four.
Wasn't hot?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Fairbar.
Yes.
Can you go on again?
One of the reasons I quit being a city commissioner.
To say this is my fine law and order to sit.
Yeah. Here, I've.
Something happened to the internet at the house today.
They didn't? Oh.
So you couldn't watch it?
Yeah, they can't figure out where any of that stuff is. Hell, I can't even pick a pole up off the floor and put it in the sink. They gotta remember looking for any of that stuff.
Or they'll stack it like super high. I'm like, seriously? Just wash them.
Did the dishwasher, right?
We do a regular session after this.
I guess.
And then they get the appointment.
Dude, we're a minute old then.
Well, that one night at the city, we were there till, what was I, midnight?
Yeah.
You look tired.
I'm really tired.
I used to play soccer right now.
Yeah. Oh, man.
You're really messing up.
Really showed me. Showed me to add anything. This isn't, not mine, by the way.
Are we going back in?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry. Last night we ordered some pizzas. Why didn't...
Yeah.
Make a motion to resume regular session. No action.
I second.
I already had a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's fine. I was late getting back.
Uh, wasn't had.
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Bear Bauer.
Yes. One more. Well, actually, we got two more, but...
One more executive session over. KSA saying five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel. It'll be the three commissioners.
And Eric.
And Eric. We'll be back in ten minutes. So nine... Fifty-five. I don't think we can wait. Fifty-five. I don't think we can wait.
I sure.
Yep, Commissioner comments?
Oh, okay.
I have none, so you can...
Okay. Well, so, first of all, I am, if I had any part in elongating this meeting to what it turned into, I am, I apologize. I will spread it out. You know, we got all year to do it, I guess, except for that budget. And, uh, and so, um, other than that, I'd like to thank the current employees of Bourbon County for being so very welcoming and eager to share their knowledge with me. And also thank you to all who have offered to collaborate to help ensure Bourbon County is successful. Um, I would like to thank Public Works for their collaboration on some requests from citizens for the county. Um, I'd also like to recognize the clerk's office and let them know I appreciate the information they're providing to me to assist me in doing my job. Furthermore, I'd like to thank the clerk personally for her time and successful collaboration, um, and her efforts. And in the middle of my very long week last week, I had asked, uh, the clerk to provide me with, uh, any statutes or resolutions that'll go along with any topic on the agenda. And she did this within a timeline that exceeded my expectations and even went further as to add relevant statutes to resolution, resolutions to forms, um, that the clerk distributes to the public when they're making requests. Um, so that is the true collaboration that I look forward to while serving the commission in Bourbon County. To the rest of the departments and the department heads I've not visited with yet, I am quite excited to meet with you and learn all about what you do as well, uh, if you'll have me. And thanks again, everyone.
Okay. Well, it's late and I'm not gonna make a speech, so I'm only gonna make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
It's not a speech, those are comments.
I'll second motion.
How long have you been dragging out?
I guess.
That beer barrel?
Yes.
Whizzenhut?
Yeah.
I don't even know what I'm looking at.
Brandon, do you want one of them?
Yeah, I'll take one. David and Micah, you need to sign these.
I'm just telling you, there's a lot of stuff going on here, you know?
I appreciate that. I don't know.
Give them a call. I'll try to pick it up next week or the week after, but if you can do it next, if you can do it the next couple of weeks, it'd be nice. If you can do it the next couple of weeks, it'd be nice. If you can't next week, that's fine. I can take care of it.
No, I think, uh, next week's the fifth, sixth. I just can't do it on the 13th.
We can talk about it next week too, ain't that what it is?
All right, I'll call him tomorrow.
But if you'll call him tomorrow, that would be much appreciated.
Will you turn off your thing for me?
No.
Yes!
Micah, Micah! He didn't, just need to sign this paperwork.